Welcome to the meeting of Howard's Board of Appeals on this date, August 28th. The purpose of this meeting is to hear and decide applications before the Board of Appeals, which have been brought pursuant to the bylaw of the town of Howard in the Massachusetts Zoning Enabling Act. As required by law, the town may audio or record this meeting, which we are, and each person attending to either audio or video recorder this open session is required to inform the Chair. During this meeting, the Chair will recognize promptly a member of the Board, the Secretary, and the attorney presenting the case to inform the Chair if a protocol is not being followed. While in open session, those wishing to present comments or ask questions regarding the case are requested to fill out an information form on the podium. You'll do that when you go to the podium, but during the session at one point, we'll open up open session. If you have any comments after the attorneys have presented and the Board has made comments, then you're welcome to go to the podium and ask those questions and identify yourself. But there should be a sheet there. Again, anyone who doesn't have an agenda, they're on the corner table, okay? So it's both plenary is not taken care of. I'll ask the clerk to actually, excuse me, I'd like to ask the Board to identify themselves, starting with Rachel.
Rachel Lawrence, zoning compliance officer.
Dave Nonoy.
Chris Murphy.
John August.
Brian Sullivan.
Alexander Donahue.
Kenneth Dixon.
Okay. And I'd like to have the clerk call the first case.
Case number 2024-15 Flying Horse Equestrian LLC through their attorney, William D. Crowe Esquire. The owner of the property is located at 339 Queen Anne Road, assessors map 15 parcel P3 in our zoning district. The applicant seeks to appeal the decision of refusal of permit application by the building official and is a special permit or in the alternative variance from 325 attachment to table 2 area regulation to construct a new building pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaw 325 54 52 and Mass. General Law Chapter 40A Sections 3, 6, and 10, and this case has been continued from July 31.
I just want to also just make one additional comment that the applicant is being represented by not only William Crowe but also Michael Donovan.
My partner.
Your partner, but we didn't mention Mike's name when we wrote the case. Okay, John.
So I was addressing this one. We submitted an agreement for a further continuance to Rachel, and I believe that was submitted to you, Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
We had some discussions with the planning department, and there's some looking at some stormwater issues, and we want to get that issue resolved before we bring it here, before the ZBA.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. Before I offer a motion for continuance, I'd like to further understand why you are delaying it because of the stormwater situation, which is an issue that this Board has no authority over. We don't have regulatory power over that, over that planning. Case was first scheduled to continue from June to July, and now we're looking at our third continuance, and I just don't understand why it's a period of time to hear this case.
Sure. So when they were sent out for comments, the planning department came back and said that they supported the decision of the building department and that the reason was that there wasn't because it was under the Dover Amendment, there was not required to do a stormwater management plan, and because they didn't have that, they therefore were saying that it was unreasonable to have a side setback which was six feet, at which point I had discussions with the planning department to say, "Well, we'll address that," and we did. We provided new plans with a stormwater management plan in there. We submitted those to the planning department because that was the reason that they had given. They took those plans and the planning director said, "Okay, I have those now, but I'm not qualified to review those plans and determine whether that, we feel it's reasonable or not now." That would have to go through the town engineer. So we then made a request to have those submitted to the town engineer, and then we just heard back, I don't know if it was Monday or Friday, last Friday, that the town engineer said that they felt that they had a conflict so that they couldn't do a peer review of it, and we were told by the planning director that they would be seeking to get a different engineer to review those plans.
So it's your opinion that once a peer review and the plans are submitted to the planning board?
Yes.
That you feel that the planning director, town's planning director, as well as the planning board, might have a different view of the project regarding the six-foot setback?
The director may, but at a minimum, we would then have the information from the peer review of the engineer that we could say that that, if depending on what that says, it could be supporting or against or neutral to our application. On the issue of whether it's reasonable or unreasonable to have the six-foot side setback, because under the Dover Amendment, that's what the question here is reasonableness. And so what's being, the planning department is saying, "We feel it's not reasonable because we have concerns with the stormwater management," and...
I didn't get that. When I read the comments from the planning director, the town planner, I didn't get that understanding that she was concerned, her opinion of not being in favor of the six-foot setback and the reasonableness of that was because of storm management, it was basically because of the location of the building, a lot, and not because of storm management. But that being said, I'm unfamiliar with this part of the law, and maybe you guys can help me out here. So we signed a continuance agreement in June, June 18th, which gave a 180-day period of time to come back to the Board. Wasn't paying attention, and I signed another one in July for another 180-day continuance. And I feel at this particular point, we've got, and I'm not inclined to, you know, I'm not able to discuss it with the Board, signed another one when I've got five months still to go on the one signed in July.
I don't think you needed to sign the one in July.
Well, I didn't need to do it, but we did. It was presented. So right now, we have one in July that's good for six months. Since I did sign it, I can't go, I'm not going back to June's. So obviously, we'll, you know, continue, I think I'll most continue the meeting, but I'm not going to sign another continuance. I signed one in July, which I don't feel another one is warranted, signed at this time.
And that's fine with us. We're not looking for an additional 180 days from now.
Okay.
That's just the form, as I understood it, to submit.
Correct, but if my opinion, the clock started, you know, back in, at this point, back in July.
And we're fine with that.
For six months.
Yep.
The other thing is that when you schedule your next meeting, and Attorney Crowe, even both of you need to help me out with this one, the agreement with the continuance is the agreement we're going to schedule the next meeting within that 180-day period. So, you know, every time we have it scheduled, not that it's a big deal, guys, but I have to go back over, spend time going over all the documents to familiarize myself of what I looked at, you know, 30 days prior, because I don't want to come in cold and not going back over everything. The next meeting we schedule for this case, in my opinion, probably unless something extraordinary has happened, I don't want to continue it. I'd like to see the next time you schedule the meeting that we have it on that date. That's my opinion, but it's up to the whole Board to decide that, not just me. Okay.
If I may.
Go ahead.
To a certain extent, it's out of our control. I understand what you want to accomplish. It's hard for us to say, "Okay, the town will be ready," because the town is still trying to find an engineer to review these calculations.
I see. So it's up to the town at this point to come up with calculations in order to do that.
Review the calculations to formulate an opinion, because all of this doesn't fit into the square hole we usually go through. It's a round hole.
I understand.
So it's the Dover Amendment, it's reasonableness, and it seems that the building commissioner, Mr. Me at the time, said, "Well, I don't want to be wholly responsible for this decision, so I'm going to refer it to the Board of Appeals." And then the planning department weighed in on that and said, "Well, this should go ordinarily through site plan review, but it doesn't have to because of the Dover Amendment. But we think that it's being unreasonable to be six feet from the lot line because we're worried about stormwater runoff."
Okay.
So the crucial issue seemed to be the stormwater runoff, and we need an expert opinion.
All right. So basically, I just understand here, because even though this Board has no jurisdiction over drainage and so forth, or septic systems, or anything like that, other than the fact of doing a condition that they get, those regulatory boards are satisfied.
And we don't want you to have to make that decision. We want the expert to make that.
Right. At this point, you feel the fact that the planning board may adjust their opinion of the reasonableness of this case, of this six-foot setback based upon the stormwater report?
The planning, not the Board, the town planner.
Town planner.
It's not gone to the Board. It's just gone to the town planner.
Okay.
And/or, I just would add to that, and/or, we would then have the opinion of the engineer hired by the town, the peer review, and that would be a piece of fact that we would have to argue from regardless of whether the planning department weighs in or not.
Sure.
So we're prepared to, once the peer review takes place, to come forward whether or not the planning department has given another, you know, comment or not.
Out of curiosity, because I'm not aware of this, does the applicant reimburse the town for outside engineering costs and so forth?
Ordinarily, no.
Right.
But because this, the engineering firm ordinarily reviews these, it's part of their contract with the town.
I see.
But because this isn't going through the usual square hole, they said, "No, we're not getting paid for this under our contract."
Okay. All right, I understand.
So believe, we would like to have this done tonight. Our client made it clear today he wanted to have it done tonight, but we have advised, we don't want to go forward without that expert opinion from the engineer.
Yeah, and the opinion from the planning, town planning director does have a weight, at least for myself personally.
Right, right. And we know that, and so we would like to hopefully...
Okay, I understand. Well, I'd like to offer a motion that we, this meeting be continued at a date to be, for a month to be set by the applicant and their attorneys, you know, for this case. So we're not ready, prepared, we're not ready to go forward for September. You need to, you're still waiting to find when this is going to be done. Or do you want to reschedule this for September?
I would say schedule for a date certain to September with the understanding that hopefully the town will have its engineering report by then.
Okay, all right. But motion is for my Chair here that we continue this meeting to the September meeting, which is, I don't know, a second here.
25th.
Yeah, 25th. Okay. I make a motion, this case number 2024-15 be continued to September 25th.
Second.
John, you got a second?
I have a favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Want to hear your opposed? Okay. It is approved. Sit there.
Next case is going to be case number 2024, Peter J. Benziger through his attorney, William D. Crowe, and attorney Michael G. Donovan. Property is, the owner of the property is located at 13P Hall's Path, assessors map 106 parcel G6-6 in the RR zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit or an alternative variance from 325 54 non-conforming structures and uses 325 attachment 3, table 3 height and bulk regulation to construct a pool house on a developed residential lot pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws 325 54 and 52 and Mass. General Law 40A Sections 6 and 10. Let me read what the Board of Health has to say. A report that information will require at the time of the building permit filing, the proposed project needs to consider the following. One, the septic system was installed in '07 and designed for four-bedroom. The property is located in zoning H with, or within zoning H, water recharge district, and it is restricted to four bedrooms. The pool house shed will have a finished space, the restriction may be required. The proposed project will require relocation of one of the absorption chambers in the soil absorption system. A licensed installer will be required to apply for a septic permit prior to any sign-off by the building department. The highway department has no issues with it.
There's no other comments.
No other comments.
No other comments. There was, just want to read in, and I sent the applicant a copy of this next to the Board. Thank you. I had requested the building department questions regarding the proposed structure. And particularly included bathroom, would it be considered habitable space? And the response from the, David Anderson from the building department is that, "Good morning, Brian. It seems you're concerned with the accessory pool house as being habitable space. As per chapter 2 of the 2015 IRC definitions, habitable space are space in a building for living, sleeping, eating, or cooking. Bathrooms, toilet rooms, closets, hall, storage, or utility spaces in similar areas are not considered habitable spaces. There are many approved unconditioned accessory structures in Howard. Some of these are seasonal pool cabanas that enclose a bath or toilet rooms. The building department is concerned with this proposed pool house. If it gets past lot coverage in the zoning, so the zoning department approves the variance or such a permit, will be with a structural code compliance along with life safety codes and regulations, et cetera. If we need more information on the building plan, we will request it on our review, i.e. foundation, plumbing, floor plan, et cetera." The, and just, I did also ask another question regarding the building department, which I didn't report to everybody, but basically, as the design was shown was coming from a 240-foot structure from Pine Harbor, merely considered that at first like, you know, a shed sign, you know, environment. And actually, any, any structure that's over 200 square feet goes through the standard building codes, standard permitting, and it does not qualify, does not, even though it's from Pine Harbor, it does not go through a shed permitting process. Over 200 square feet has to go through standard, you know, building codes and permitting. Okay, so anyways, I got that out of the way. Appreciate it. I'd like to ask the applicant representative to do themselves and anybody, any persons assisting in the application.
Thank you. Attorney William Crowe from the law firm of Crowe and Donovan LLC, my partner Mike Donovan, representing the petitioner, Peter Benziger, who is seated behind me with Mrs. And Peter's the owner of the property on Hall's Path in East Howard, and if you're familiar with Hall's Path, it meanders through the woods, so to speak, so this is not in downtown Howardport. This is much more rural setting, much more woody setting and private. I'm not going to argue unless you want me to for a special permit, because our zoning compliance officer has weighed in in her site summary that we need a variance because we're not a pre-existing non-conforming single-family residence. We're something other than that, and the bylaw says you have to have a variance. So I want to address the variance issue. If, when I get done with that, you think, "No, it should be a special permit," then let me know. Be happy to address that. So what we're talking about is a pool house, not a residence, not creating habitable space, not creating living space, not creating a bedroom. And just to address upfront, the Board of Health concerns about the, they mentioned moving the septic system. We already have the, part of the soil absorption system. We already have the septic permit, which I'm happy to give you all a copy of if you haven't seen it.
You guys need to see it? It's okay. Sorry.
It has a restriction in it.
Oh, okay. Let's take a look at it. Thank you.
So the Board of Health has already addressed the issue of living space and bedroom. So it's a four-bedroom septic system, and they've said the pool house shall not be used as a bedroom or living space without removing a bedroom from the main dwelling. So you're not going to sleep out there, I appear. So it's not going to be used as a bedroom or living space. It will be, it will have a bathroom. It's not going to be heated, which ordinarily is a key issue in whether something's habitable or not. It will be painted, will have wallboard, but it's mainly for storage and drying off when you get out of the pool. And a bathroom, which is very important in all of this. So the proposed pool house, as you can see on the plan, is on the southerly side of the existing pool, 240 square feet, and we're not dealing with issues of setbacks here. Meet all the setbacks for the proposed structure, and we meet the building coverage. So we're compliant in all respects except for site coverage. So the existing site coverage is 29%. The maximum is 25%. So we're over by 4% already, pre-existing non-conforming as to site coverage. And our proposal is, as you can see from the plan and from the narrative that we submitted, to remove quid pro quo, an equivalent amount of site, of gravel driveway equal to the square footage of the pool house, so that the site coverage would not go up or down, it would stay the same as it presently is. We also submitted the building plans by Pine Harbor so that you can see what the structure would look like. And our contention is that as far as the variance is, a variance is concerned under 40A Section 10, that you can grant, if you so choose, desirable relief in the form of a variance from the bylaw requirement that we have to have 25% site coverage and not 29%. And how much is that? That is, an extra 4% would be 1,589 square feet that we would have to sacrifice somewhere else off of the gravel driveway, for example.
What's that square footage again?
According to my calculations, 1,589. If you look at the zoning compliance table at the lower right of our plan, and it shows you how much, how many square feet would be, 25% would be 10,001, so I subtracted that from the existing 29%, which is 11,590, and the difference is 1,589 square feet. So if you took more of the gravel driveway away, that would be a significant chunk of the driveway, and the driveway is necessary for turning radius for both Mr. and Mrs. Benziger, two-car garage, to back out of the garage and then drive out the driveway. We could convert that to grass. Would prefer not to, because it's a lot easier with gravel, especially rain, snow, muddy. You back out, and then the next thing you know, your rear wheels are stuck. So that's why if you say, "Well, why don't you just take more of the driveway?" That's the reason.
Sure.
As far as the driveway is concerned. We think that, to meet the terms of the statute, that we have a unique shape to the lot. We have uniquely shaped structures on the lot in relation to other lots and other homes in the same zoning district that, and we already have a pool there. So what's our hardship? What do we need? Why do we need a pool house? Health and mobility, mobility issues. Mr. Benziger is 67 years old. He just had one knee replaced last year, which I can sympathize with. He's going to have another one replaced and for, to, for physical therapy for his knees and for his overall health. He swims in that pool several times daily. If you're emerging from the pool, as it presently stands right now, to get into the house to go and use the bathroom, you have to go up steps onto the deck and then into the house, walk through the house with your wet bathing suit, and use the bathroom, and then go all the way back to the pool. Anybody, shall we say, that's over 60, I think, would probably sympathize with the need to use a bathroom on a more frequent basis than we did when we were 25. So for health and mobility issues, difficulty in getting into the house, in and out, and needing to use the bathroom more frequently, we would contend that that's the hardship here, and it doesn't seem to me personally like it's, that we're asking, that it's not a big ask on our part, because we're asking for a pool house, not a residence, not a bedroom. We're sacrificing an equivalent amount of the driveway. So our argument would be that there would be no substantial detriment to the public good. We're not creating habitable space. There'd be no substantial derogation from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. It's still a single-family residence, and we still have the same amount of site coverage. Consequently, we would ask that the Board grant the variance for those reasons this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. I do have a few questions, which I'll address after other Board members ask theirs, but first I'd like to express my opinion about site coverage. But first, I'd like to express my opinion about site coverage. And I think this, this case really points out, I think, a need on changing the code in the town. There is an extensive use of stone materials in the landscaping and driveway of this lot. These materials are very permeable. And in my opinion, as well as I believe the Boards in past discussions, that when, 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 when used, permeable materials are used, that only 50% of the area coverage, covered by permeable materials, should be assessed for site coverage. This Board has recommended the Town Planning Director to request the Planning Board to consider and prepare suitable article for the Town meeting to amend the zoning code regarding calculation of site coverage when suitable permeable materials are used. I would estimate that if this code was approved, that this lot would probably be in compliance or close to it to 25% site coverage. And especially when reducing the stone landscaping by 240 square feet is indicated in the proposed plans. So I don't know the, the point of the fact that the extensive landscaping with stone in a way also has created a hardship, you know, regarding this particular case and what the applicant wants to do for a pool house. So I do have some of the questions, but I want to start with that, and then I'll follow up later. Now, Dave, do you have any questions?
The only question I have is, I see the six-foot-by-whatever-foot area you plan to remove. What are you gonna be putting there? When you remove some of that driveway, that, that little block is just kinda isolated.
Grass.
Just grass? That's the only question I have.
The question I have is, so the, was the house built in 2007? One was, my question, I guess, is, was the house built before the current zoning was in effect? Because you would need a variance to get to the current site coverage.
Understood. Lee, that date is in the site summary?
Does it mention the septic system in 2007? That might just be an additional, a change.
And the house was there?
Built in 2008.
Built in 2008?
Yeah.
Was that in your summary?
I thought it was. If I can pass on what Mr. Banziger said.
Sure.
He purchased it in 2011. And the assessors' records say the house was built in 2008. So it wasn't on his watch, so to speak.
Well, the pool, the pool is probably what blew by the site coverage, right? The house probably didn't. It was adding the pool in 2011 that did that, and the garage. So that, was there a variance granted to do that?
No.
Then how was it, I'm confused if the, how did it go above the site coverage? This is well within the time of our current zoning.
That's a very pertinent question, Mr. Murphy. And I can, all I can say is that there was no variance obtained, and these things happen. So if, if your concern is, well, it's not a pre-existing, non-conforming situation that complied with zoning requirements at that time, then that's a fair statement. We're asking the Board at this time to grant a variance to allow that 29% site coverage to remain and legitimize the illegitimate situation that exists there. And, and just to follow up on the Chair's comments, I'm not putting words in anybody's mouth. My experience with this Board has been that it seems to me that the lowest on the totem pole, as far as priorities, has been site coverage in the past. It's more building coverage setbacks and so forth than site coverage, not, not too worried about in, in general. That's been my experience. So I would be delighted if the bylaw got changed, to take into account, be more realistic. I'm informed that, I'm told that other towns either don't have site coverage requirements at all, or they have much less stringent site coverage requirements.
When I inquired about that and spoke to Moore in Engineering, he wasn't aware, outside of Martha's Vineyard in Tuckett, any other towns in the Cape that, besides Howard, that use site coverage?
Mr. Crowdo from Moran has told me that also, yes.
Okay. So it's, but regardless, it is the code.
They have to deal with reality.
So if you were, second question, if you were to remove the entire driveway, as Brian told me in the discussion, of just, whole driveway is replaced, made of grass, does that bring it to 25%?
It, it would. And we talked about that, the client and I talked about that, wrestled with that, and decided to put this in front of the Board to see if the Board could live with the 29%.
And to Brian's point, is there a difference between grass and gravel, permeable surface?
Well, our, our bylaw, the definition.
I guess that wasn't a question, it was a comment. I don't think there is, so.
Definition in our, in our bylaw of a driveway, it talks about regardless of material. So peestones, shells, it doesn't matter, under our bylaw, so.
Or grass. It says irregardless of material.
Right. But grass is not, with all due respect, that's not a material. That's the lawn.
I would agree, but it says if it's designated as a parking area, irrespective of a material.
Interesting.
Basically, the code is brutal. Yeah, again, I'm not saying I'm happy with it, but I think.
Yeah. It is, it is the code. I have no, I have no more questions.
But what I say, Mr. August, to people is, there's no requirement in the bylaw that you have a driveway. So we just say, okay, we don't have a driveway anymore. That's all gone. We take all the gravel out, and we don't designate anything as a driveway. You don't have to.
But you do have to have parking spaces.
You do have to have parking spaces.
And we park it on the grass.
Right, you're required to. But that's, that's another discussion, but. Chris, do you have any other questions?
No more questions.
John.
My question was, was similar to Chris's, just as to how we got to the existing. But I think we've.
Yeah, I took up on that one very good, guys. It's, you know, our routine. Okay. Ken?
My question probably is to Rachel, why not a special permit? Because it's a much lower standard for us to grant?
Because it's an accessory structure. It's not a single-family dwelling.
Because the improvement isn't, correct?
Yep, because the proposed structure is an accessory structure. It's not an addition or an alteration to a single-family dwelling.
It's not covered by the same benefits. As a single-family house would be.
No other questions?
I think if we attached the pool house to the house, then it would be an addition to a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family residence. But it's all distant from the house, to attach it to it.
You also don't have any setback issues regarding the home. Actually, you know, so it's.
Site coverage.
It's just the only thing, it's site coverage.
We're good on everything, setbacks, building coverage, we're less than half what's required. So the only thing is this little bit of site coverage.
Bunch of stone.
I'm not gonna beat a dead horse. But I think the explanation for the permeable driveway is far more advisable than having a lawn put in. I merely agree, because the lawn is gonna cost the property owner more work from there. Lawn service. This makes no sense whatsoever, but I'm just moving along.
So you're, you're in agreement with my comments?
I am always in agreement with your comments, yes. Most of the time.
Always, most of the time.
It sounded like Mr. Donahue was saying it's okay to leave the driveway and not convert it to grass.
One could interpret that, I think that's. All right. So regarding the point Chris made, and Don also had the same thoughts here, where, this was out of compliance, and this is kind of a learning situation for me as well. You know, 16 years ago. So basically, 16 years ago, this went to 29% for a site coverage. For some whatever reason, and nobody picked up on it. Okay. Isn't there, isn't there a term, a period of time when?
10 years.
10 years. So we're over, we're over the 10-year situation.
Town can't do anything about it anyway.
Right. So now it's, it's actually, does that make it an approved nonconformity?
After 10 years, yeah.
I would argue that it, it does by non-action by the town.
I think the term's legally non-conforming.
It's legally non-conforming.
Legally non-conforming.
Okay, I suppose so, approved. Okay, all right, legally non-conforming. So if it's legally non-conforming, and you swapped out the 240 feet, in essence, do we still need a variance versus a special permit? I'm just, now, obviously, the variance is a much higher form of relief. The key thing either way is, I, any variance or any special permit, the applicant's in risk of any rebutter objection to the situation, which, which I don't imagine would happen in this particular case.
We're not aware of any.
Okay, all right. So.
Whichever way the Board finds its way to granting the relief we're looking for is fine with the applicant.
But I do think where it's an accessory situation, we have to go the variance route, because it does not afford it the same as a single-family house. Would you agree, Rachel?
That's how the bylaw reads, and that's how the Board has voted in the past.
So we'll, we'll go that route. What is the expected timeframe of the project?
Do you have any idea?
We've spoken with Pine Harbor, they've given us a proposal. We've spoken with John Martin, he's given us a proposal. And an approval. And I'll sign those tomorrow, and get into those with an expected start.
So you have the body, please, to say that? Should you write?
I'm sorry?
I was gonna relay to you if it.
Okay. Or you can come to the forward.
So we have a proposal from Pine Harbor for the, the building. We have a proposal from John Martin for the septic work.
Okay.
Pending approval, I didn't want to sign and give them any money until we got approval that we could move forward. So with that being said, as soon as we get approval to move forward and whatever has to happen with the butters and et cetera, I've spoken with the direct butters, and there's no problems there. So we're looking to start in late October.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe the septic first, get that done, and then the pool house in late October.
All right. So obviously, you'll be applying after the 30-day period, after, from the decision when it's granted. Then you'll be applying for your building permit and having to get the approvals from septic and so forth for the building. I mean, Board of Health, ahead of time.
Right.
That would be mid-October.
So it'd be, mid-October would be absolutely, that might be tight.
It'd be the earliest.
Yeah.
Yes.
So the key thing here is, we're after Labor Day, you're gonna be doing it this year. All right. That's, okay. I do believe you can park all your contractors' vehicles on the site?
Sure. I believe so.
So I'll be, as far as recommending in a motion, that we probably don't need to have the, the time condition on this particular case. The as I, as I discussed, as, you know, as a proposed accessory structure setbacks are in compliance, and given my opinion of the permeable materials and calculating site coverage, you know, I'm gonna be in favor of this project. But I do have, you know, had some concerns in looking at, and actually, the concern was lack of information. So the, in the plan submitted, we don't have plans that were submitted for, you know, what the interior's gonna look like, or for the foundation, et cetera.
There was a reason for that.
Right. And I figured there's always a reason. But the, in my checking, as far as the, and I was thinking about, you know, suggesting that the meeting needed to be, you know, continued, because we didn't have those plans. But I, in checking things out, in the, in the past, we've always had full building plans, build-out plans. It isn't the, and I actually talked to Dave Rye about this, gave him a call, okay? And I always consult with a, another experienced person, that this EBA does not have any regulatory authority over how the, the build-out is done inside the, inside the building. So, but the building inspector, you know, I'm quite sure here is gonna require, you know, better idea what the foundation plan's gonna be.
Absolutely.
Which is not here.
Absolutely.
He's gonna be concerned on the construction itself.
Right.
I can relate the fact that, and again, just from conversations or from email conversations, that, you know, it is because it's not habitable space, this would, as far as, perhaps would be considered more of a three-season room in how he looks at the construction. Structure. Okay, just passing that along.
The reason, if I may, for, for not interior design, was that I asked Jack Mead, the Building Commissioner at the time, could we submit for the building permit to get the denial letter, to refer this to the Board of Appeals? Could we do that with just the exterior plans, like this?
Sure.
So that the petitioner wouldn't have to spend a lot of money having plans designed for a pool house and not get the variance.
Right.
So it was a practical, and, and Mr. Mead, who was very practical and.
Absolutely.
Said, yes. So that's why you don't have any interior plans.
But it.
If you really wanna see what that bathroom looks like, we'll get you some plans.
I had thought I would need to go that route for approval, but in checking things out.
Good.
Do not need to, that's not, not approved.
Appreciate all of the diligence of the Chair in asking all these, getting all this information is very, very thorough.
I'm done with my questions. And do I have, I'd like to open up to, are there any, is there anybody here tonight that would like to, in the public, that would like to speak regarding this, this case application? Okay. Hearing none, I, I will ask the applicant, if you've, attorneys, if you have any final comments regarding this, this application. For the owner, you know?
I, I do not, I was here a couple of months ago when we spent, when the Board spent a lot of time on, on the, another shed situation, and it ate up a lot of time. So I appreciate how much time you spent on this, but just remind the Board that it's just a pool house. That's all we want with a bathroom.
Sure. We're just crossing those Ts and those dots and those Is, 'cause it, you know.
And that we need four out of five.
Other applicants, you know, we just don't make a decision just because it looks like a good idea.
Absolutely.
I will entertain a motion to close public hearing.
移到
Second. I have a vote on closing.
Aye.
Aye.
All those in favor? Okay.
If you'd like to sit down, sir.
Oh, you're all set, yeah.
We're all set. Thank you.
By the way, if your knee operated on again, or another one, go to, go to, you know, Attorney Kroll's doctor, because he was running around here two weeks later.
Worked out well.
Okay. Okay. The, going to assign, you know, voting in this case, that Al Donahue, myself, Ryan Sullivan, David Nunley, Chris Murphy, and John August.
Who is not voting?
Not voting is Ken.
Thank you.
Okay. The, oh, by the way, you know, folks, regarding on motions, now going forward, any motion or anyone seconding a motion has to be one of the voting members. Okay. All right, so, all right, I'd like to have any other discussion by the board? Okay. And I will entertain a motion to close discussion.
Make the motion, close the discussion.
Sure, all right. Do you want to second it, 'cause Dave already...
Oh, he already did?
Yeah.
Second.
Vote to close discussion.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, it, I'd tell the chair, you've got it, I know you gave you that, well, you can re, you can rephrase mine again. I didn't hear it, but that's okay.
Case number twenty, twenty-four dash twenty, Peter Benzinger, who is attorney William D. Kroll Esquire, and attorney Michael G. Donovan, has been granted a special permit. A variance, I'm sorry, spoke. The owner of the property is located at thirteen-eighty Hall's Path.
Assessors' map.
Yeah. Assessors' map, one-oh-six parcel G-six dash six, in the RH zoning district. The applicant has been granted the variance from three-twenty-five fifty-four nonconforming structures and uses, attached in three-twenty-five, attachment three, table three, bulk and height regulations to construct a poolhouse on developed residential lot pursuant to the Howard Zoning Bylaw three-twenty-five fifty-four, Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section ten. Due to the shape and the topography of the land, as the failure of the board to make the grant will result in substantial hardship to the applicant, the board further finds that the conditions is specific to the property and does not generally affect the entire district. There will be no substantial detriment to the public good by granting this variance, and that the granting will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. Any relief not expressly granted here under is hereby denied. All work... All work shall be performed in accordance with the plans submitted with this application. Said grant and approval is subject to the following conditions.
Yeah, you can skip that one.
Yeah, I'm gonna stop that one. That the life project, approved project, all construction vehicles will be parked on the applicant's property and not any public street or road. Approval of the Howard Zoning Board of Health is required by the building permit filing, and a violation of terms and conditions, a special permit may be enforced as a violation of Howard Zoning Bylaws pursuant to the general law, Chapter forty, A, Section seven, and the Howard Zoning Bylaws, as these may be amended from time to time.
Yeah, I made one error in my draft, it's the conditions of the variance may be enforced. Apologizing. Any further discussion, the board? I might ask the, the attorney, given you heard on the, the motion, would you want to suggest any correction or in addition to that motion?
Just a second.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Voter the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Motion is granted.
If I may, for the, for the next hearing, just as you pick who's gonna vote, I don't want you to get tired of listening to me, so have a fresh voice. Donovan is going to handle the second and the fourth cases tonight, and I will handle the third.
Sure.
So he will address you on the next petition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rachel, should I stamp in the construction permit from the Board of Health?
No.
Okay, I'd like to call the next case?
All right, case number twenty, twenty-four, twenty-one, John and Margaret Finnegan, through their attorney, Michael G. Donovan Esquire, and William D. Kroll Esquire. Owner of the property at eighty-eight Brooks Road, Assessors' Map twelve, parcel teeth four and six, in the RH one zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit, or an alternative, a variance, from three-twenty-five fifty-four nonconforming structures and uses, three-twenty-five attachment to table two, area regulation to replace existing attached garage on a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the zoning bylaws of three-twenty-five fifty-four and fifty-two, Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section six and ten.
You want to read me the notice? I'll read it.
The Board of Health has indicated that the second-floor space above the garage appears to meet their qualifications of a bedroom, as there is a discrepancy between the number of bedrooms the Board of Health has to file, has on file, and what the assess, assess card shows. The current floor plan of the whole house will need to be provided with the building permit. It is determined that there is a three-bedrooms existing. The proposed construction will result in a fourth bedroom. Title V inspection will be required prior to the sign-off of the building permit. It is determined that there are four bedrooms already existing. Proposed construction will result in five bedrooms, and the septic system will need to be upgraded. A licensed septic installer will be required to apply for a septic permit prior to the sign-off of the building permit. The chairman asked the applicant, or rep...
No, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Excuse me. The highway department also had no concerns. So I'd like to ask the applicant, representative, do themselves, and anyone assisting you in the presenting the case, presenting the application.
Thank you. Michael Donovan, Pauline Donovan, here with Bill Kroll, and this is for the property at eighty-eight Brooks Road, owned by John and Margaret Finnegan. John is back here, the white, and with him is Kathy De Meyer of Encore, who's gonna be doing the work, should it be approved. Brooks Road, the property is eighty-eight Brooks Road, it's actually at the corner, hopefully you can see that on the, the plot, in that corner between Sunset Road and Brooks Road. There's two frontages there for, and the one on Sunset Road, which is where the driveway is, that goes into the garage.
Excuse me, sorry.
Yeah, sorry. You want some water?
No, I'm sorry, I got plenty of water.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
So the houses here, the only nonconformities as it exists right now are the lot size and one of the front setbacks, the one on Sunset Road, that you can see there is twenty-point-one, and the requirement is twenty-five. And then the only addition, change to anything, other than the coverages, building coverages, but those percentages are all gonna stay conforming, I'll get into the details, but the only real major change, the only, the only change to the footprint is the dark area you can see there, right next to the garage, in that area where it says the twenty-point-one for the existing, and then the proposed is nineteen. So it's going, it's nonconforming now, it's gonna stay nonconforming, it's gonna, setback will decrease one-point-one feet. And then in addition, they're gonna put a second floor on that garage, so that space on that second floor will be within that same setback area. So that's the other intensification of an existing nonconformity. And as we set forth in the papers, they had the unfortunate incident of two large trees in front of the house on Brooks Road fall and land on that garage, and it was inspected by the, the building commissioner, the building inspector, as well as their insurance company and the fire department, that all gave the opinion that it wasn't something that could be salvaged, and that they need to demolish and rebuild the garage, or rebuild the garage, I shouldn't say they have to totally demolish it. So at that point, they looked at it and made a decision to say, well, if we're gonna have to rebuild it, we'd like to add space above it. And in doing so, they need room to be able to put a staircase in to get up. So that colored area there, you can see in the plot plan, is the area that's they're putting in there to be able to run stairs up to the second floor. And if you looked at the building plans, A-one, the first page, the top-left corner has the existing and proposed for the first-floor plans laid side-by-side nicely there, so you can kind of see what's there. The garage door is gonna stay exactly kind of where it is, so what they're doing is just adding that little strip there to put the stairs in that will go upstairs to the second floor. So what, what we're left with is the existing buildings, as I said, is, has that, just a lot size and that one front setback, that's nonconforming. Everything else, all the other setbacks, the other front setback, and the south and the west setbacks are all conforming. The building coverage is seven-point-eight percent, and it will go to eight-point-three percent, well, well below the thirty percent max. The site coverage is at fourteen-point-eight, it will go to fifteen-point-four, so point-six percent more, again, well, well below the thirty-five percent max. And the height is gonna stay unchanged as well, even though they're putting a second floor on, it's, that peak is actually still below what the peak is of the existing house. So it remains unchanged, it's at twenty-point-two feet now, or stay at twenty-point-two feet. So all told, it's a very kind of straightforward, they need to replace the garage, they're doing so on the same footprint, except they're adding a couple of feet there to be able to put the stairs in to the second floor. We would submit that that's clearly within the board's purview here, it's a, it's not a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood, it's not a detriment at all in any way that it could be looked at, traffic noise, odor, congestion, sewers, public services, all those things will remain unaffected by this, this change. The, the one thing that was read was the health department, and, you know, both the health, it'll have to go through health, and it will have to go through conservation as well, because it's in a district that's gonna require that. So they know that, they're planning for that. It is, there is three bedrooms now, as the assessors' map says, the assessors' card is indicating it's three bedrooms now. There's, there's an area that is an unfinished area, that's not habitable, it's not heated or, or E.C., that I think is causing a little bit of the confusion about, is it a four-bedroom or is it a three-bedroom? That will all obviously get sorted out when they go through the health department. So I would submit that that's not really something that the board needs to address here, but in case it was interested, you know, it is, our client's saying it's a three-bedroom now, and they're not sure what they're gonna do as far as the area above the garage, will, what will that be? And as the health department says, once you submit the plans, we'll look to see, would that constitute a bedroom? But if it would, it would be a fourth bedroom, and as the health department said, it's a four-bedroom septic, so they would be within that amount at any rate, just in case you were curious. But again, I don't think that's anything that the board needs to address tonight. I think that's, that's all I have, this is pretty straightforward, I would say, but obviously, we're here to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Like to start with questions from the board, if we can?
I don't have any questions.
I have no questions.
Okay. David?
No questions.
No questions. Oh, I can't let that go.
I knew that was coming.
I've never gotten that before.
All right. First of all, what's the expected timeframe of the project?
From when the approval, I mean, assuming it was approved, we're looking thirty days before they could submit for building the permit, and then when would it be, whenever you get the permit, or, yeah? So whenever they, we get the permit, so we look at the fall.
They've got a contract that's ready to go this fall?
Yes.
Okay.
Realistically, that's forty-five days.
Yeah.
Yeah. Regarding contracted vehicles, et cetera, on the lot, what do we stand on that?
We have a double lot, there's a second driveway on Sunset, that holds at least three large vehicles, so I don't, I don't know how many contractors there be, but I wouldn't anticipate any problem, that would have at least four parking spots, pretty large.
Given the, I mean, the main concern is, and even that, that area is a little bit more traveled and so forth, particularly Brooks Road, I probably would, it's up to the whole board to decide, but I probably wouldn't want to have, would want to have a date requirement, which means that all demolition and framing need to be done by, you know, you know, next spring.
June thirty, yeah.
Okay.
Are you thinking June thirty?
Yes, June thirty. Any objections to that?
Yeah, that's not, not an issue, we're fine with that.
So we'll, we'll have that, I would recommend that be in there. I, I guess I'm looking, just, again, just minor questions, but looking at this plan here, is that on the bottom, it says proposed first-floor plan, should, is that a mistake? Should that have been proposed second-floor plan?
No, that's the first floor, 'cause the stairs are coming from the first floor, and then it will go to the second floor.
Okay, so the existing, so I had the existing second-floor plan, which, there isn't an existing second floor. Really, I thought it just, I thought we're going, we're adding, there, there was a second floor already in that, that garage? Right. Do you see what I'm referring to?
Yeah, I, I think that just referring to, that's the outline of the top of the first floor, right? If you have the first floor, you have the ceiling, rafters.
Says existing second floor, I just wanted to point out when you submit this stuff...
I think he was talking at the bottom.
Looking at the bottom of this plan.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't say proposed first-floor plan, yeah, that's a typo.
I'm just suggesting here, when you present this stuff to the building commissioner or building inspector, you may want to correct that.
Yep.
Thank you.
I see what you're saying, I didn't see that, yes, thanks.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stamp this in, should the board approve, but I think it needs to be corrected.
Okay. Would you like to submit a corrected one tomorrow?
No rush.
Okay.
I just would, oh, actually, Rachel, what's your opinion on that?
If you can get it, if you...
Yeah, I mean, how could...
Better to have that stamped in?
Okay, by Friday.
At some, at some point, just...
Yeah, okay.
Get it in, all right? So, so what should that be? Existing second-floor plan should be, and again, in the bottom here, what, what should be the titles here?
Yeah, either no second floor, or the outline of the top of the first floor.
See, the top you've got proposed, the top section is the existing situation, so that's existing, the bottom is proposed. So the bottom would be proposed second-floor plan... So, the bottom would be proposed second floor plan and proposed first floor plan.
Well, so where, where it says.
I, I know, okay, I'm sorry, existing, proposed second, so this should be the second floor.
Yeah, where it says proposed first floor, it should be second.
Apologize, okay.
That's why they get the landing up at the top.
Yeah, all right. I'm assuming you're going to have access to the main house from that, from that second floor?
The plan does not show that.
Plan doesn't show that?
No.
There's going to be no access?
No, it's not in the plan.
Okay, so that being said, is there a second exterior entrance to this garage? Other, other than the garage doors, is there an egress that gets, you know, stairway to get, you know, into the bottom stairway from the outside?
It is a.
On the, on the proposal?
A man door.
There's a door when the proposed west elevation.
Is a door down the bottom of the stairs?
Yeah.
All right. Oh, I see it, okay.
Page 3, page 83.
I see, isn't it in page 82?
83.
83. All right, so we do have a door to go in there. So this is going to, this door is going to go into this, this garage, garage second floor, but there is no access to the main house.
Correct.
So, how many square feet is this second floor?
Looks like it's 15 and a half by 17 and 11, almost 18.
All right, Ken, all right, real quick.
Right on the A1?
280, 270, so.
That's all it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
And there's no plan to finish that space right now.
We're looking for storage space.
Okay.
Three granddaughters, and I've got stuff everywhere.
I understand, okay, that's the, the main purpose of it, to do.
It's not going to be habitable.
253, 55.
All right, so, this is, you're not looking at this, and again, not that I'd be against it, personally, at the moment, you're not looking at this becoming a D.U.
No, not right now, no.
All right. Thank you, just trying, that's what I was trying to establish.
Okay. Great.
Okay. I'd like to open this up to the public, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak in behalf, to speak regarding this, this application? Okay, hearing no one, it, you would, any, any final comments on the applicant?
No.
Okay. All right. So I'd like to, maybe have a, like to hear a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All right, motion by Ken, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, voting on this case would be Al Doniu, David Nunley, Chris Murphy, John Argus, and Kenneth Dixon. And I'll entertain any other discussion by the board. Okay. So I will entertain a motion to close the discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Chris, I don't know, sorry, who seconded it?
Dave.
Dave, okay. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Five, nothing. Okay. I'd like to ask the clerk to, any motion in this case? You can, you give it to. All right. Oh, it's right over here. All right. There you go. My case number 2020, 2024-21, John Margaret Finnegan, through their attorney, Michael G. Donovan, and William D. Crow Esquires. The owners are property located 88 Brooks Road, assessors map 12, parcel T4-6, the RH1 zoning district. The applicant has been granted a special permit from 32554 Nonconforming Structures and Uses, 325 Attachment to Table to Area Regulation 2, replace the existing attached garage on a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the zoning, to the Howard Zoning Bylaws 32554 and 52 in MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6. The granting is consistent with the Yale case and Diedrich, and related cases as it will be in an intensification of one or more, not, one or more existing nonconformities, no new nonconformities, and no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood or a pre-existing nonconforming lot. And as the proposed structure will not create any additional negative impacts with respect to traffic, noise, odor, and congestion. Any relief not expressly granted hereunder is hereby denied. All work shall be performed in accordance with the plans submitted with the application. Said grant and application are subject to the following conditions: during the life of the project, there will be no demolition, exterior construction, or new landscaping between June 30th and Labor Day of any year; two, that for the life of the approved project, all construction vehicles will be parked on the applicant's property and not on any public way or road. The approval of the Board of Health will be required prior to the issuance, any issuance of any special, any building permit, and a violation of terms and conditions of this special permit may be enforced as a violation of the Howard Zoning Bylaw pursuant to General Law Chapter 48, Section 7, and the Howard Zoning Bylaws, as these may be amended from time to time. Okay, any further discussion by the board? I actually, and it, it doesn't have an impact, but just one question I've got, actually, I'm going to ask the applicant, why is the Conservation Commission involved on this project? As a regulatory agency, I mean, I don't see water within, you know, a mile.
Was that a motion that was made?
That's what we were told.
That's what they were told, did you just make a motion? Mr. Chairman, if you made a motion, I'm going to second, then we can have discussion.
No, we do, we, the motion comes after discussion.
Didn't you just read the motion?
You read the motion, the motion comes, the second comes after any further discussion. Okay. Just, it's out of curiosity, I just don't know why Conservation is involved, so.
Well, it's something we have to look into.
Okay, just, that's fine, just was, okay. All right, there, at this point, no further discussion, can I hear a, a second for the motion?
Second.
Okay. And a vote of the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion is carried, five, nothing.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, because if there's any discussion after the motion, can, if there's any discussion that might affect the motion, we don't second until we resolve any, any discussion of any changes. Then they get seconded, as I understand it. Oh, I missed that, okay. Pretend I did. Well, gentlemen, I failed to close discussion in the last, last case, anybody have an issue with that, or are we all, okay. Right. Okay, I'll tell the clerk, read in the next case, please. Okay. Case number 2024-22, Kristen Kelly Fisher and John Kelly, through their attorney, Michael G. Donovan, Esquire, and William D. Crow, Esquire. Property is located at 101 Squanton Road, assessors map 101, parcel X4, excuse me, X6, in the Alzoning District. The applicant seeks a special permit or any alternative, or the alternative, a variance from 32554 Nonconforming Structures and Uses, 325 Attachment to Tables to Area Regulation 2, raise and replace pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard Zoning Bylaws 32554 and 52, and Mass. General Law Chapter 40A, Section 10 and 6. Okay, a letter of, of full support for the construction of a new family dwelling was received from Paul Medeocas and Sherri Prusen of 96 and 98 Long Pond Drive in Howard, who owned two abutting properties. The Board of Health indicated the septic was installed in 2001 for four-bedroom required in variance to allow sewer line to be 68 feet from the top of the bank where 100 feet is required. The following conditions are in place: there will be no increase in square footage, habitable space, or number of bedrooms beyond the approved plan dated 12/1 of 2000. Without Board of Health approval, as the project increases habitable space, Board of Health approval is required in one of the monthly meetings. There are no other further comments by the town departments.
Could I ask that the clerk read the entire letter from the neighbor, just one paragraph?
Absolutely, let me just find it. I'll be happy to read it. I got it here, it's, regarding case number 2024-22. To Mr. Sullivan, Ms. Law, Mr. Ketchum, and Yoush Houski, we are writing as the abutts to the above referenced property. We have two properties boarding the petitioners and have been neighbors for 13 years. We are fully supportive of the, of this application for a special permit of variance for the construction of a new single-family dwelling, and will follow to the addition of a new house and refreshed landscaping and neighborhood.
Thank you.
Your pleasure. I'd like to ask the applicant and representatives to do themselves, and those assisting you in the case.
Thank you, Attorney William Crowell from Crowell and Donovan in Howardport, and I represent this evening Kristen Kelly Fisher, who is seated, seated behind me here, and we also have assisting us Dan Croto from Moran Engineering seated beside her. We submitted a copy of the assessors map with the petition, the property is located on the shores of Long Pond, if you're familiar with that area of Pleasant Lake. When you're on Pleasant Lake Avenue, Route 124, there's Sea Quatum Road that runs along the border of Long Pond, and this is towards the end of that road where the subject lot is located. Very nice area. The petitioners, Ms. Fisher and, and her brother, John Kelly, children of Bob Kelly, who I knew for many years, and he was a very successful real estate broker and property owner in the Pleasant Lake area on both Long Pond and Hinckley's Pond. Had many closings with him over the years. This is his daughter and son, and they co-own the property, and they're looking to demolish and replace the pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling on the same footprint. As per the plans that you have in front of you by Moran Engineering, dated January 12th to 24, and revised on July 24th, 24, and the building plans by Rickroy Construction, plans to build the, the new dwelling. The existing, just running through the setbacks, the existing front setback is 74.9 feet from the right-of-way, it's not really on a road, it's on a right-of-way, and that's going to decrease slightly to, by five feet to 74.9 because of the covered entry that's going to be new, that's shown on the plan. But certainly complies with the 25-foot setback requirement. The east side is 40.1, and will remain 40.1. The west side, as Ms. Law points out, is, on her site summary, is 23.7 from the shed, not the 42 feet that was on the compliance table, but 23.7, but meets the requirement of 20 feet from that side. The rear setback is presently nonconforming at 17.8. We did not indicate 16.1 because that's a, a concrete patio, I believe that's ground level, so it's from the deck, 17.8, pre-existing nonconforming, but that will not change with the new structure. So the only change in the setbacks is the five-foot reduction because of the covered entry that I mentioned earlier. The existing building coverage is 8.9%, and the proposed will be 9.2%, which are still well below the 15% maximum. Here's what I want to point out, where we're paying it backward instead of paying it forward, because the site coverage on this lot is nonconforming presently at 31.7, 31, 31%, but we're going to decrease it to make it conforming in this case, to make up for the previous case, to 29.9. So we're paying it, paying it back, backward. So the building height is presently 17.4, it is going up to 29.9, but it will be under the 30 feet, and those calculations are shown on the plan as required. So the only change is the rebuilding of the deck, 17.8 feet from the southerly lot line, and that we're going up. So under our bylaw, if you're on the same footprint but to an increased height, you have to have a special permit from this board, and, and that's what we're seeking this evening, or in accordance with, and/or in accordance with the Yale case. We, Mr. Croto is here because he has been in communications and emails with the Health Department, and the Health Department has, has acknowledged that we do not need a, a variance from, from the Board of Health, and we do not need to have a hearing before the Board of Health. We were already approved previously, so thank you, Dan, for straightening that out, and they, he's also been to the Conservation Commission, they did not make any changes, he was there last week, they're going to issue the order of conditions, and we have the approval letter from the Endangered Species people, saying there's no turtles or other such things on the property that are going to be harmed by the construction. All that being said, it's our contention that the new dwelling would not const, would not cause a substantial increase in noise, odors, fumes, congestion, traffic, or the like, would not be a nuisance, and that it would not result in any substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood, we would ask that you grant the special permit this evening. Thank you. Thank you.
So the Board of Health, it already had a meeting and already granted approval?
They did not need a meeting. They were originally saying they needed them in a meeting, but Mr. Croto pointed out why they don't. So as I understand it, if they replace, we replace the sewer line? Go ahead, Dan, if you want to address that. Thank you.
Just, you don't have to. Dan Croto from Moran Engineering. Till the early 2000s, the sewer line needed to be 100 feet from any well and resource also. And then the early 2000s, they changed it. So just the septic tank and leaching area need to be 100 feet. The sewer line could be 50 or 100 feet. So this falls in, so this whole septic currently meets code. There is, there's the variance on the sewer between the house and the septic tank. So the Board of Health's take is as long as we remove that one component and replace it, put in a new sewer, then we have no more variance. It meets, but currently, this system, if it, if it, the same exact system's there, if it went for a permit, it would go through with no variances. But it had this, you know, relative variance that, which she, one of the health agents originally caught, and then we actually spoke about it in June, and she didn't remember that. So then, as soon as Bill sent me the letter, I talked to her again to make sure, so.
Well, thank you.
It was good.
Well, the Board of Health will still have to sign off on the building permit, correct?
Correct.
And you mentioned, I had a note here to ask you about it, the, you know, the hearing on August 21st, where they gave the project approval. But I gather you still need to go back to the Board to receive your order of conditions. Is that correct?
No, just.
Okay, just.
Just a permit for the sewer.
Okay, all right.
He's talking conservation.
Oh, conservation.
On conservation, you still have to go back, you still, you still need order of conditions from the conservation.
We should get that in the next meeting. We were approved.
Okay. All right. Okay.
The endangered species was, there's a 100 feet around the whole pond is habitat. Doesn't mean it wasn't endangered species found there, so any project we can.
Sure. Questions?
No.
No.
Okay.
None.
All right, just my usual two timeframe.
Mr. Roy could not attend this evening, but we're probably talking the same as the last one, mid-October at the earliest.
Okay.
To get our building permit, once we get past the 30 days and reapply. So it's probably beginning of November to start construction.
All right. And what is your opinion, Attorney Crowe, guiding the date requirement that we typically use in that location?
If we're, if we're weather tight by June 30th, we're okay anyway.
Right.
So go ahead.
We'll be fine. Okay, just wanted to.
Thank you.
Check on that, what your opinion was. All righty. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak regarding this case?
I don't know about parking vehicles. Looks like there's sufficient driveway room there, but it's only on a right-of-way anyway. Not like it's a lot of traffic along there. You don't want to block the neighbors.
It is, it is a private situation, so, um, I gather in this particular case, we could probably just eliminate the, perhaps we'll discuss with the Board whether we need to have the construction vehicles on the property or not. But it's either going to be in the property or it's only on the, on the right-of-way.
Right.
Which, there's no pass through to anybody else down there.
Correct.
Non-existent Eighth Street.
Just a dead end.
Yeah, so I don't.
What Eighth Street? It's a movable Eighth Street, apparently, because on each drawing, it's in a different place, so. The plot plant.
Very old plant.
All right. So now.
Very old. The lot plant shows it going all the way to the pond.
Very old.
Huh?
Originally, this was, this was the golf course.
The other three or four you still need. Five. Okay.
You're right. One plant with the golf course. Didn't know that.
With an eighth street.
As there's, no one else be heard regarding the public, I'd like to ask for a motion to close the public discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay. Chris, thank you. Do you want to have a vote on the closing?
Aye.
Approved, that's nothing. Okay. And voting on the case will be Al, Dave Nunnely, Chris Murphy, John Argus, and Kenneth Dixon. And I'll entertain any discussion, additional discussion by the Board?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Chris and second by Ken. I'd like to vote on the, on the motion.
Aye.
Aye.
By nothing, okay. I'd like to ask the clerk to make a motion on this case.
All right, case number 2024-22, Kristen Kelly Fisher and John Kelly, through the attorney, William D. Crowe and Michael Donovan Esquires. And the owners of the property located at, and I'll try to pronounce the name right, Sea Quantum, 101 Sea Quantum Road. Assessors Map 101, parcel X6 in an R L zoning district. The applicant has been granted a special permit, 325-54, nonconforming structures and uses, 325, attachment to table two, area regulation to raise and replace the preexisting nonconforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws, 325-54, 52, and Mass. General Law 48, Section 6. Granting is consistent with the Gale and Dietrich cases and related cases. As there will be, be an intensification of one or more existing nonconformities, no new nonconformity, and no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood or preexisting nonconformity, nonconforming lot. And as proposed, structure will not create any additional negative impacts with respect to traffic, noise, odor, or congestion. Any relief not expressly granted is hereby denied. All work shall be performed in accordance with the plans submitted with the application of said grant and approval, as set to the following conditions. Subject to the approval of the Howard's.
You need one.
18. During the life of the project, be no demolition, exterior construction, or new landscaping between June 30 and Labor Day of any year. Subject to approval by the Howard's Board of Health, subject to order of conditions by the Conservation Commission, a violation of terms and conditions, a special permit may be enforced as a violation of Howard zoning bylaws pursuant to General Law Chapter 48, Section 7, and the Howard zoning bylaws, as these may be amended from time to time.
Okay. Any further discussion by the Board? Hearing none, I'll entertain a second on the motion.
Second.
Okay. All right, John? You have the next one. I'd like to have a vote, to entertain a vote on the motion.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's approved, five, nothing. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You have your permit.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
All right. D. Crowe Esquire, Michael G. Donovan Esquire. And the owners of the property located at 12 Winding Way, Assessors Map, 24, parcel R3 dash, excuse me, R8-3, in the R L zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit or an alternative, a variance, from 325-54, nonconforming structures and uses, 325, attachment to table two, area regulation, 325, attachment three, table three, height and bulk regulation to construct a second-story addition and add a new attached porch to a preexisting nonconforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws of 325, 54, and 52, and the Mass. General Law of 48, Sections 10 and 6. Let's see. The Health Department indicated the septic system was installed in 2006 for three-bedroom. The proposed will have no impact on the septic setbacks or increase designed to flow. The Title V inspection would be required before the approval of the building permit.
It's the Highway Department?
Oh, yeah. No other comments? The Highway Department, we'll see what the Highway Department's going to talk about.
Yeah, no, no concerns of Highway Department. And we did receive, I got it today, it came in earlier, a letter from Aaron Butter. Dear Members of the zoning board appeals, I am writing to express my full support for the proposed renovations at 12 Winding Way in Howardport, case number 2024-23, by Lawrence R. and Laurie R. Cowell. Cowells have shared the project plans with me, and I believe that their proposal for their house will enhance the beauty of the street and the value of the neighborhood. I hope that the Board approves their plans, and I look forward to seeing the finished product. If you have any questions, or I can provide any additional information to support this case, feel free to contact me, and she gave her phone number. I have the chair request that the applicant represented introduce themselves, and anyone assisting you, present your application.
Good evening. Michael Donovan again, and Bill Crowe with me. This is for 12 Winding Way, which is owned by Lawrence and Laurie Cowell, who are seated here in the front, directly behind me. So 12 Winding Way, Winding Way is a dead-end street down, kind of at the bottom of Gorham Road, and up a hoided road between Gorham and Bank, and just off of kind of Route 28. The lots are small in that area, as you can see, this lot is 7,000-plus square feet. So not unusual in this area, there's a lot of nonconformities on these lots. So here, the frontage is nonconformity, the front setback, south setback, rear setback, quite a bit that's, that's nonconforming. What's being done here, though, is fairly minimal. There's two things, basically, they're looking, they're asking for. One is to be able to go up on the same footprint. So they want to do a second floor on a portion, probably, you know, roughly two-thirds of the house, they would add a second floor onto that area. And then the one other thing is that we can put a porch on, I think the porch is five feet by 16 feet. You can see that on the proposed conditions plan, on the Moran Engineering plan there, it's the kind of highlighted area that says porch on it. So addressing the porch first, I guess, it's not changing the setbacks, because the setback, as you can see there, is 14.9 from the road, from the property line, and the porch setback there is 16.8, so that the setback is still going to remain the same at 14.9. So the, the only thing that's, that's increasing is the building coverage because of that porch, and it's going from, it's already nonconforming at 19.1, and it's going to 20.2, so a 1.1% addition to the building coverage. And the site coverage would be fairly similar, it goes from 20.1 to 21.1, but the site coverage is all bit conforming, so that's not really an issue. So the, the only change that really is changing on the setbacks is the, the building coverage, because the, the other setbacks are all remaining the same. They're not changing in any way because all that's happening is going up, and it's just the footprint of that porch, which doesn't affect any of the setbacks whatsoever. As you said, the, the neighbor has issued a letter of support. I think that neighborhood itself feels that this is a positive development for the neighborhood, you know, enhance the beauty of the area. There shouldn't be any adverse or negative impacts to noise, odor, congestion, public services, or any of that nature. And we need a special permit because of that building coverage, as well as all of these other setbacks that are nonconforming. But as I said, those are not increasing. So we would submit that this is a minor change, just adding the footprint of the porch and then just going up and creating habitable space in those areas, so we need a permit for it, but it's not encroaching any further than it was previously. And so we would submit that this is a very appropriate case for a special permit to allow these small changes to take place in this building. And with that, that's the presentation. If you have any questions, obviously, we're here to answer them, myself and the homeowners.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? Ken?
No.
Just an observation, that appears to be the only property, it doesn't have a driveway. Your septic system takes up that entire yard up there, huh? Yeah. Makes it difficult for you. The porch is going to be a lovely addition. You can talk to your neighbors across the street there with all the children.
They send their children over.
They bring them over. They leave them with you, I hope. Anyway, I have no further questions.
No questions?
No questions.
No questions.
But, well, actually, I don't have any either, except for my two standard ones.
Yeah, so the standard ones, the, the vehicles here, there may not be places on the property to park the vehicles. What I would submit is that it's on a dead end.
Oh, I guess there's no hope to get approval.
He's hoping to the wringer tonight.
Let's hope he's not voting on it.
Folks, I'm sorry. I want to get.
And break my head into a sweat over this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And as far as timing, we're going to start this fall.
Yeah, we're going to start this fall.
So we'd be starting this fall, so I don't see a June 30th as being an issue.
Okay. All right. So we're, Al, if you're looking at the draft, we eliminate number two. The, let's go back to. Is there anyone in the public, I don't believe so, that wanted to address this? Hearing none? You've got to invite more public to these meetings.
They're all watching on TV. It's much easier to sit in your living room.
But I can't call in.
I, I went home after the last hearing, got home, my wife's watching, and I sat and watched you guys have your discussion for another half an hour.
Okay, all right. Good to know.
Got a little to do at night, huh?
Well, that's what I tell, people say, I watch you on TV a lot, Attorney Crowe. I say, well, you need to get a life. If you're watching TV, that's your excitement.
Waiting for a baseball story to break out.
Well, we are, the zoning board is trending, you know, upwards as far as, I'm sure, with, with Howard's TV.
Look at all this.
So it...
It's a styling.
You know, I just actually lost my place. All right, so anyways, no one in the public wants to speak to this thing? Any other questions from the board?
No questions.
All right, so I'd like to ask a motion to close the public hearing.
移到
Okay. Motion by Ken.
Second.
And a second by Chris. And a vote in the closing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's approved on that. And forty on the case will be Al, Dave Leonardley, Chris Murphy, John August, and Ken Dixon. Do I entertain any further discussion by the board? So I entertain a motion to close discussion.
移到
Okay, Chris, second by Dave. All those in favor, close the motion?
Aye.
That's fine, nothing. Yeah, I'll ask for a motion, clerk to give a motion in this case.
Case number 2024-23 Lawrence R. Cowell and Laurie Cowell through their attorney, Michael G. Donovan, Esquire, and William Crowe, Esquire. The owners of the property located at 12 Winding Way Assessor's Map 24 parcel R8 dash 3 in the RR zoning district. The applicant has been granted a special permit from 325 54 nonconforming structures and uses 325 Attachment 2 Table 2 Area Regulation 325 Attachment 3 Table 3 Height and Bulk Regulations to construct a second story addition and add a new attached porch on a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws of 325 54 and 52 in Mass General Law 40A Section 6. Granting is consistent with the Gale and Dietrich case and related cases, as there will be an intensification of one or more non-conformities, no new nonconformity, and no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood. On a pre-existing nonconforming lot, as proposed, structure will not create an additional negative impact with respect to traffic, noise, odor, and congestion. Any relief not expressly granted here on two is hereby denied. All work shall be in, perform in accordance with the plans submitted with the application. Said grant and approval are subject to the following conditions. During the life of the project, there will be no demolition, exterior construction, or new landscape between June 30 and Labor Day of any year. Subject to approval of the Howard's Board of Health. For a violation of the terms and conditions of the special permit may be enforced as a violation of Howard's zoning bylaws pursuant to General Law 48, Section 7, and the Howard's zoning bylaws, as they may be amended from time to time.
Okay. Any further question by the board? Okay, hearing none. I'd like to request, ask somebody for to give a second for the motion. Chris? And I'd like the board now to vote on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion is approved, five, nine.
Thank you.
You got it. Thank you. And I apologize for the comment.
No, no, actually, that's kind of... Take care, folks.
The most thing about time you get home, we're still not here.
Still locked up.
So don't tune in.
Actually, just watching, I said, "Can we watch something else?"
Sure, a central, any discussion?
I did notice that all you see is the lawyer, the back of our heads, all you guys, front on.
Oh, you don't, oh, cameras up there. Oh. We need to get that resolved. Shouldn't there be a camera for...
It's only fair.
Oh, seriously, no, no. No, but seriously, shouldn't there be a...
It used to be, it used to be because you, we were here, and you could get two angles.
I think we request the mirror, so we reflect it.
And by the way, guys, the next time you're in charge, you're presenting the whole agenda?
Yes.
I mean, some Danish pastry something?
Crafted coffees to keep everyone awake, yeah.
A box of Joe, I mean, for God's sake, you had the whole night.
Doesn't have to be less than 25 bucks or something.
As long as you don't spend, was it 25 or 50?
50.
50. Yeah, it'll be under 50, box of...
50 for each person?
No.
That's a lot of coffee. Thank you, good night, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to request that we just take a plausible adjournment for a few minutes, okay? All right, so 8:26, taking a brief adjournment. We convene in a few minutes. And as a reminder, guys, the mics are all still hot.
So when the city, when the attorney's city, he's not seeing, no, 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 as far as the channel 18, wherever the channel is, you don't, you don't get, you used to get, there were views.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's not happening anymore.
We still do that.
So, all right, so you can get views of the attorney's face when he's giving...
Oh, so the angle will be like from here, like it will be, like there is no angle of him like dead on, like...
So where's the camera? That's the camera within him?
That's the camera right there, yeah, that's getting the shot here.
Okay, all right, so he's, he says the back of his head, so you can actually see the...
Yeah, yeah, so you can, there are times when we would go to this angle, then we go back to this angle, yeah, stuff like that.
All right, okay, well, thank you, appreciate it.
Rachel?
Yes.
Have you been dealing with Beacon, Beacon Solar?
No. I don't really review filler permits, though.
Oh, okay.
But that's not, that, that name isn't ringing any bells for me.
Okay, yeah, I'd ask you before, you said it was mostly the, my generation does, the huge majority of it.
My generation, Sunrun, although I haven't heard good things about some of them.
What was the second one?
Sunrun.
Okay.
Haven't heard good things about them, though. Um, I don't know if they're local.
All right, are you thinking?
Yeah, you're, you're good, yeah, I signed the agreement, so...
Nice.
Yeah.
Who'd you go with?
I just can't justify it.
Who'd you go with?
Beacon?
Oh, you want the beacon?
Yeah.
Are they around here?
They're on.
Oh, okay.
Actually, the few people that are, people that reference, have referred them.
Okay.
Most of their business, but most of their...
No, no, that's fine.
They install plugs. I know, but your electric cars...
Yep.
All right, I'll make the, I'll make the change. No, thank you.
That's good.
Yeah, so they do a good job, is what I've been told, everybody I've talked to, so they're definitely happy with it.
That's good.
And the warranty was actually the selling point.
Yeah, that's probably...
30-year one. Insurance, and it's underwritten by an insurance firm, so...
Yeah, yeah, that's good. Do they usually offer 30-year warranties for it?
Not any, I saw.
Yeah.
I didn't talk to too many people. It's funny, I was fortunate with House Faces West, so, but I have a garage, so it's, most of it's gonna be on top and high up in the garage, so I bring my kids by in there, mid 30s. A little guy like me says, you know, "I don't know if I want solar panels." My kids look at, say, "I don't care, look okay." They're worried about, you know...
The aesthetics.
...gonna look like new, every year.
Plugging everything in?
Yeah. I couldn't justify it for... Because we don't. Oh, and so many great areas that we're in a residential neighborhood, and that's such a... Five for like state grants and some of the other stuff, even though it's residential. And then I had told them, you know, the part of our structure that's 1797, I really got one of them. So what could you do to the other structure when they came back? It was gonna be like 60 grand out of my 100.
You know, I just realized that on 388 Queen Anne Row, we actually didn't, we said we're gonna submit in September, but I never did a vote on it.
We didn't? Can we vote on it now, is it?
Yeah, I think I can, we... No, was a vote necessary?
To continue it?
Yes, we're continuance.
So you did, you did...
Already has one, so I didn't need a vote.
But you did vote.
You did vote on that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that's fine. All right, so I'm sure I, I'm trying to remember if I did a vote on it or not.
Want to call the meeting back into order?
Oh, yes. Is 8:31? We're back in session. Trying to find my... Okay. Great. All right, I'd like to move now to the approval of the July 31st minutes.
I have a question on page six, that maybe my recollection is wrong, but on the, I guess, fourth statement down, where it says, "Mr. Sullivan, by clarification, the project has already received approval from the historic commission with demo delay imposed." I thought there was no demo delay.
Yeah.
Which was why we were talking about the work starting.
Right, that's right, it should be with no demo delay. I don't recall discussing demo delay, to tell you the truth.
Yeah, and then later on, we discussed that they're gonna start right away, they want to start in September, so I don't think there was...
I think we ought to just leave that, approval from the historic commission, period, and get rid of that with demo delay imposed.
Okay.
All right?
Yep.
All right. Anybody else's comments? All right, I've got just, and I'll give it to you.
Wait, are we voting, are you still discussing the minutes?
Yeah, still discussing the minutes. So, all right, so basically, that meeting, there were, there were six people on the board, at the board meeting, at that meeting. All the votes were obviously always five to nothing regarding the final motion, you know, on the case, but everything else, a closed discussion, any particular point at time, that would have been a six to zero vote. And I'll give you my, my, my draft, it just needs to be, so the only five to zero votes would be on the motion itself regarding to relieve. Everything else would have been six, six, nothing.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So I want to make that change.
Now, if the board, once you assign the board voting members, can other people vote?
Once it's assigned, the next thing voting is strictly just, no, just the five people voting, or just the people voting on the motion. After I assign, I believe, were, anyone else that was not assigned, like for instance, Al is a clerk, I assigned him to vote on all the motions, I assigned him to vote in all the cases, but had I not assigned him to vote, he actually can't read the motion. At that point, it's the voting people, as I understand how the rule should be.
Makes sense.
So after you assign the voting members...
Then...
But the whole board can vote on closing the discussion? Is that what you're saying?
No, actually, actually, you're right, after I sign, after I assign the voting, the voting, once I assign the voting, then we got anything to do with the motions, it's strictly have to be, you know, five...
And that's what, it looks like that's when it goes to five o.
That's what it is, you wrote the opposite. But you wrote the opposite.
After you assign the voting.
After I assign the voting.
But you wrote the opposite on the, on your edit?
I understand, I'm gonna mistake that.
Okay. I just wanted...
Three, five, oh.
That's what it is.
Thank you. I think that's how it should be done. Okay, so we're on. All right, so with those changes, I'd like to hear a motion to approve the minutes.
移到
All right, you have a second?
Second.
Ken and Al, okay. All right. New business.
You got a vote on that?
Oh, that's a good idea. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Actually, first on the new business, I want to discuss 40B in a moment. And there's gonna be a couple of things I'm gonna bring up tonight, so we're gonna be probably another 20 minutes here, guys, okay?
Twenty? Twenty?
Yeah, I'm just guessing, maybe a little longer.
Go.
Twenty.
All right, so when, up till a few months ago, when the attorney told me in a meeting that I had to assign voting members not until closing of, the closing of the public hearing. The more I thought about that, I have a, I have a problem with it, and I just want to discuss what my problem is. Now, like tonight, there was five full members and one alternate, okay? And by a strict part of the code here is that I'm supposed to always just, if there's five full members, those are the only members that vote. But Dave did it, and I continued it, of trying to get everyone, including alternates, engaged in meetings and voting. All right, which I think is a good policy, as far as uninterest, okay? But even if I, even regardless of that, you know, it's, it's hard not to have, when you look at a case, and you read through, and you listen to everybody, a personal opinion of how you think it should go, you know, whether you're going to favor it or not favor it. If there's only four, particularly on a difficult case, it may be, you know, you know, a butters in here, people arguing, I mean, whatever, on a difficult case, I have to, if there's not, I'm always typically assign the five full members on that case, because to the, you know, go to court, people, whatever might do, you know, I don't want anyone to be able to point, you know, in land court or whatever, that, well, you know, they violated code, he allowed an alternate to vote when a full member was there. Now, that being said, that's one reason for this. The other thing is this, should there only be four full-time members here, and I have to pick an alternate? I don't want to pick, I, I don't want to pick an alternate to vote that I already know what their opinion is.
I wouldn't know their opinion.
Because there's been discussion, oh, you can pick up in discussion as far as how someone is leaning. You know, there can be, I mean, there's just...
That's no problem. I mean, if we're gonna have a vote, I mean, what you're saying, every person gives their opinion.
But they give their opinion, now, if I, if I, if I've heard everyone's opinion, and let's say that I'm not in favor of something, I have two alternates, and one's in favor, you can tell by the body, you can tell by the discussion, they have issues with it.
So you're saying you want to appoint the people before discussion begins?
Yeah.
Well, it seems to me you already do that, you already have written down.
No, I don't. I just check off, I, I, I've just been, I don't, I don't pre-assign anything. Because I don't know, first of all, who's gonna be here. I didn't know that Tim was not gonna be here tonight, so I wasn't gonna upfront. I mean, what I do upfront, you can take, I don't know if you've ever seen my drafts, but, you know, here's...
That doesn't matter.
I know, what I do is, I, obviously, I go through the whole case, and I have a session here as far as, you know, as far as voting, who's gonna, who's voting, as a record particularly, but I check that off during the meeting, I don't pre-assign voting. What made you change it in the first place? What was the basis? The town, town council said, I shouldn't assign voting until after closing of discussion. Okay. But what I'm trying to say here is, and I, I think I, I try to have a fair and open point of view on everything, you know, and I, I don't... You know, and I, I don't, um, and I try not to come into a case already not determining where I think it's gonna go. I mean, I'm always, sometimes very surprised, turn of events can happen during a meeting, on a discussion. But all I'm suggesting here is, is that let's say it's whatever case it might be in, it was a controversial case, and room's full of people, and the butters are upset, and I have two, two alternates, and I, it's easy to tell from the discussion where they're leaning. I don't wanna be in a situation where now I'm assigning a voting of an alternate.
Well, it sounds like if the lawyer told you had to do, you have no choice.
Right.
That's just the burden of leadership.
Yes. Well, I, I think it just, I just wanna bring it up because I, I may change back.
An alternate should have the right to vote, and you should be able to name the alternate.
I know, but if I have two alternates and it's clear which alternate, how they're leaning.
Well, Brian, I think you could actually select privately, privately select those, you know, check your boxes, but you don't have to announce it, but you've already checked your boxes prior to the discussion.
Right, that's actually what I was getting to, yeah, exactly, I agree with that.
Yeah, check your boxes, and then don't announce it until after the discussion.
Yeah, but out there, they're not gonna know that.
Doesn't matter.
They might.
You might be overthinking this.
Yeah, it's gonna be documented.
Am I, am I overthinking this?
Yes.
I, I just-
You're leader, you gotta, that's what you gotta do, that's your job.
Well, I know it's my job, I just wanna point out the fact that I don't wanna have anyone be saying later on, "Yeah, well, he chose Dave and didn't choose," you know, Ken was in favor of it, but Dave had a comment that, "Geez, I don't think this is a good idea." Because during, during discussions, we all often indicate that we're in favor of a project. That's during discussion. It happens all the time. You know? And I've, I've said it myself, which I said, "Well, I'm not in favor of this." We had Ocean Avenue recently, and I spoke up, I spoke right away. No, I don't think so.
I mean, I think the only time that you're going, well, I mean, it could go any direction, but, you know, most cases, it can be, we disapprove of something.
Well, that's the issue, right. But even when you approve it, you have an abutter that may be arguing a case.
But I don't think that's gonna change it, right? You're really gonna get hung jury, right?
All right, so- Yeah, no, the-
It's not really gonna change the outcome.
The attorney said, like, like you point out, what's the rules of-
Robert's Rules.
Robert's Rules. Robert's Rules, the vote should come, the assignment should come after, you know, whatever, open discussion is closed, that's what she suggested. But she wasn't telling me the fact that-
If I remember right, her point of view was that it doesn't bias the presenter to kind of try to charm us, right? If they know who's voting while they're presenting, they would appeal to the people that are voting rather than the entire board. If, if I remember correctly, her view of why she thought it should be until afterwards, so everybody is even until, just, you know, until it comes time to vote.
I mean, I can't think of a time that I haven't been, you know, as far as signing votes so far fair about the situation. We haven't had too many denials, you know, to tell you the truth. But we've had approvals when it's been controversial. And that's, I just wanna leave myself or the board open for interpretation as to who I assign to vote.
I just think, either way, you leave yourself open, because then if you don't follow the town council's guidance, then someone's gonna object that you didn't follow the town council's guidance.
All right, so I'll follow town council's guidance, if I know ahead of time, I'll just, you guys know.
That's on record.
Huh?
That's on record, town council.
Yeah, all right, so I will, I will, when an alternate is voting, I mean, I had the alternate tonight vote on four, four, you know, you know, several cases. The, uh, but, and I, again, I'd like to do that because participation and get them engaged. All right, so I will, going forward, if I know we don't have five members on the board, and there's only four, I need an alternate, I will check off who I'm gonna have vote before, you know, you know, before we, the case is, the case is heard.
Okay.
Okay, all right. All right. Okay. All right, so guys, the, um, town is gonna be gearing up.
Brian, can I, just for one minute?
Sure.
So it's corrected on the record, you and I had a brief discussion in the hallway about motions?
Yeah, you were absolutely right.
The Robert's Rules of Order, you do have to have a second on a motion before it can be discussed.
Okay, so I will change the, uh, the format of how we do things. All right, the town is gearing up for potentially, well, expecting two different forty B applications. Obviously, one by, uh, Penrose, uh, who got, who was awarded the, from the Affordable, um-
Mocelyn property?
The Mocelyn property.
Yeah.
And at some point here, uh, the, at the intersection of Queen Anne Road and Main Street's gonna be a project by Mid-Cape Churches. Okay, also on Queen Anne Road, but, you know, passed down from near the intersection of, so those two are coming up. The, um, typically, uh, so, wanted to just, first of all, I sent you all a, um, went through a copy of a training manual, okay? That's done, that's done by Mass, uh, Mass Housing and Community Development, right? Okay, so I just wanted to-
There was a training given, like, about a year ago, eighteen months ago?
Yeah, and it's gonna be happening again. So we're gonna be doing another, another, I think coordinated between both, um, Rachel and Christine Flynn, who's the planning director. They're gonna be coordinating a, a training session on forty B, um, from, you know, you know, from the agency, okay? And, uh, that is- Yeah, from Massachusetts Housing Partnership. So they'll be giving us a presentation at some point, probably in September. So what I, so there's two things. There's the forty B handbook itself, which is the bible. And I think, I think you all have a copy of that. If you don't-
That's what was emailed to us, right?
I emailed you two things. I emailed you the forty B handbook, and I also emailed you, um, a training session. So, so you got emailed to you forty B handbook, um, and then you got this, this forty B handbook for zoning board appeals, and what's, and that is the training program. So that's the flip chart when they do a training. So it kinda reviews everything about forty B process. So that's what, that's what mailed out to you. All right, so I would like you guys to start to, again, you don't have to get in a deep study, but prior to the, prior to coming to the handbook, prior to coming to forty B training, when it's scheduled in September or early October, who knows? I would like you to review at least the past, on a past presentation chart, so, you know, to familiarize yourselves. So that way, instead of you getting hit with the stuff that, during the meeting, you can think about questions you might have ahead of time, you know, and to make, get the most out of the meet. So just, so I just provided that. Now, um, I didn't have Rachel print it out for you. If you, if you need a printout of it, great, Rachel will do it. But I do anticipate that perhaps, um, that this is last, this is a copy that was from two thousand and eighteen. They may have made changes to it. So when they do their next presentation, I'm assuming they're gonna have, be able to give us a copy of that presentation and have you, you know, get that printed out. But if you want the current one that I sent you on your comput, you know, emailed to you, if you wanna, you know, print it out, just ask Rachel, she'll get your copy of it, okay? If, does everyone have the forty B handbook? All right, I emailed to you, but if anyone needs another printout of that, speak up. Rachel will have herself or the team get you a copy of it, okay?
That would be helpful. Print it out.
The handbook?
Yeah, the handbook. The other one, I imagine they're gonna come with the presentation that's updated. Probably for that, I'm, I'm put with the one on the email.
Okay.
Okay.
But that one there is probably what we're gonna be, it's almost like the bible, right, so?
Yeah, I think understanding it, this, this presentation is very good. The rest of it gets in a lot of, you know, just a lot of detail. But right now, I'm looking for an overall understanding of everybody about the process. So, just to, just to just get through the timetable here, how things work. In the past, often, a forty B applicant will have informal hearings with regulatory boards. Planning Board, Conservation, the Selectmen, and they'll have, it's not for, you know, it's not for votes or anything. They just come in to say, "This is what we're planning on doing." Present their projected project, get input, you know, find out the negatives, whatever. Then they go back and they revise their plans, perhaps, and they firm, they, they firm up their plans. Uh, the folks that, a year, a couple years ago, a year or so ago, from Closed Project did that, and they found that they had some issues with Conservation, and took some time, they worked all that out. Of course, that project was pulled by the applicant. But after they had the Conservations all worked out, um, and they had input from all the, you know, Planning Board and, and the Selectmen, it wasn't till then that they then took out a project eligibility application. Okay, where they submitted, did a letter and submitted their plans to the state. Now, the town has not received any of that yet. So what typically happens now is that the, that hasn't happened with, of course, this one on, personally, you know, Penrose, they just got awarded. There has been no, nothing from Mid-Cape that I'm aware of, Mid-Cape Churches, that have, have made any kind of request for meetings from any of the other boards. And they're not required to do so. Right, so, once a letter, once they take on application, uh, for Mass Housing, all right, for an application with them, it's, you know, file for a project eligibility letter, that's a, that's a final thing. Then the town is notified that an application was received, and the town has thirty days to send the state any thoughts and, and response on an application. Then the state comes out and there's a site hearing. State comes out to evaluate and walk the site. All right, then, again, within that thirty days, first thirty days, they might have received all types of paperwork from the, from the town, you know, regarding, you know, yea or nay, and issues they might have, and they take that all into consideration. And then a project, if it's approved, a project eligibility letter is then sent to the town. Okay, so, um, at that point, you know, um, then the applicant, once they have the PEO letter, project eligibility letter, then they can go to the town and file a comprehensive permit application. All right, so, and once a project-
Thank you.
Permanent, the, the permanent application is filed. This jumps into action, okay? So we don't have to go in detail now, but this just gets into, um, the timeframes of what happens. You know, on this. And the second page of this is basically a general outline of the forty B process. So you have it, okay? All right, so, you know, again, you have the opportunity, start just to familiarize yourself with this, and, uh, get a, just start to get a handle on it, 'cause it's, once the application is filed and the state has issued a project eligibility letter, our board is in.
It goes.
We're in total charge, all right? We can get input from different depart, other regulatory boards, whatever, but they have, at that point, really, you know, no decision, decision-making situation. So it's, it's once these things start, guys, we gotta look sharp. And just request, in fact, we all start to dive into this stuff, so you know what's happening. When you read these, the, the training book as well as the forty book, forty B handbook, there are a lot of, and I said this up before, but just give it to you guys again. There are a lot of abbreviations in there, which they do it in the first or second page. Then after that, they don't repeat what the abbreviation means. So I found myself in reading it, having to go back and, you know, and, and look at, you know, okay, what was that? So that's just a little guide for you when you're going through the books. It's a handy reference as to what these departments are. Okay? All right. You got my email about the response on regarding, uh, Penrose and the Mocelyn project. You got my email, uh, I passed on from Joe Powers, okay? That he's working with council on negotiating both a land development agreement and a ground piece with, with Penrose. Most if not all, your questions should be answered during our due diligence process with Penrose. And he's gonna communicate relevant information once he's, he's got it. All right, so, again, um, the, uh, they've got ninety days as far as on that, and I'm assuming it's going to be a forty B application. But of course, it's, might be considered what they call a friendly forty B with the, with the talent of, you know, regulatory agencies, planning, you know, whatever.
In that case, we don't get involved.
We are involved. It's still us.
Even in a friendly?
Yes. It's still totally us.
Didn't fly last time, did it? Friendly.
Never got to us. They pulled it.
No, no, I understand that.
No, no.
They were, yeah.
No, but, yeah, they decided, they, they pulled the project, but they, but they never, after they got their project eligibility letter, 'cause I, I got that, like, I remember it was in December, whatever, and I said, "Okay." I was looking at it while I was going on vacation, when's this gonna hit? And basically, they never, 'cause after they get that, then they can file for a comprehensive permit application. But until, until, you know, they submit their application to the state, the state comes out to survey, you know, gets all the input from, initial input from the town regarding their, their issues with the, with the project, or, you know, whether support or issues, whatever, what input the town wants to give. Then the state comes out for inspection, and after a period of time after that, if they approve it, they issue the project eligibility letter, say, "You're fine, it's a go." And now, at that point, they find, they file for their application. Okay, all right.
I have a question for Rachel. Yeah, don't worry, I don't think you can answer it, but right now, the governor of the state of Massachusetts has been doing an awful lot of discussion relative to these forty Bs, and some discussion about changing zoning bylaws.
I haven't heard anything about changing zoning bylaws for forty Bs.
Yeah, the, uh, there was something within the last month or so, was, uh, during a press conference, she did mention that. And the other thing was, apparently the state's got funding now, or will have funding for these projects because they pushed statewide on them.
They made, so they passed the Affordable Homes Act, I think that's what it was called, and it made changes to the zoning act, but that was relative to ADUs.
Okay.
Um, so there was, the zoning act was amended to accommodate for ADUs. The changes that were made don't affect Harwich too much because ADUs are already permitted by right in all of our residential zoning districts. But it, it does change, it does affect a few of the zoning bylaws that we have relative to ADUs. Like, we, um, require that the homeowner occupy either the primary dwelling or the ADU if it's gonna be rented. We can't require them to do that any longer.
Say that again, please, Rachel?
We can't require homeowners to occupy the primary dwelling or the ADU if they're gonna be renting one of their structures.
So they can rent them both?
They can rent- They can rent them both. Yep.
The, uh, the state war is on nine hundred square feet, the one that we approved in our town is for a thousand, so I have no idea where that's gonna go.
Yeah, I can, I'll have to send Amy Kessel a question on that.
Yeah.
You're gonna get inundated.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you never know, I, I-
I've had a few phone calls about it, already.
Okay, so, um, and, uh, just so you know, obviously, once, once we, uh, a comprehensive permit application is filed by any agency that's gonna do a forty B, then things kick off, and, uh, you know, uh, through Rachel, I'll be as chair notifying a whole ton of people in, in the town, so you know, regarding, uh, regarding the, uh, the application. Okay? So, we're basically, we'll be requesting input, you know, from all those departments. Okay. Again, my goal here tonight, to just bring this all to your attention, is that, just requesting you not leave the opening session of a forty B case, when you, finally, the night before, can read about it. Okay? Like to have everyone, you know, get, you know, get familiar with the process, how it's gonna work, you know, ahead of time, of course, whatever happens, it's, uh, it's very important, because I think with both of these developments, that, that potentially you could see, or any forty B development that come for us, there's going to be a lot of interest from a lot of people in town, and this one will not be big enough.
If I may, if I may make a comment, though. Excuse me. If I had to remember the forty B, I've done a few of them, but once the board has been assigned the forty B, a problem arises if a board member is not capable of making at any point through-
I see that being the biggest problem.
Huh?
I see that being the biggest problem.
Yeah, well, first of all, it, we can negotiate with the applicant the dates for meetings. It's not the fourth Wednesday of the month.
Well, we have, we have a time period in each one.
Right, you know, and that's why I gave you that.
Right.
Now, listen, you know, essentially, what the timeframes are, we have to get things done by. But, um, that's the, you know, the strict situation of timeframes. With the agreement of both the applicant and ourselves, the timeframe's gonna be tough. All right, that's, if it's, now particularly, let's say it's not a, you know, let's say it's not a cooperative friendly forty B, the applicant, those are guidelines, and they could say, sorry, you have to get done by this, I'm not going to give you an extension. If it's friendly, gonna say, listen, we got a guy's gonna be out, we rather have him in the meeting, we need to adjust it by a week, and, and we get written approval. Okay? That's how it's handled. I've requested from the town, and I have now for several months, that we need at least one more alternate on the board. Because in a period of time, you know, what happens, like anything else, if you miss, if you miss, miss a meeting, you're allowed to, like, on the, uh, the rules, whatever, you're allowed to go on tape, listen to the meeting, read all the documents, and, you know, for sure, there's, I know there's a different affidavit, but you can sign that affidavit and be part of the next meeting. But to get to this one, you can't miss two.
Wow.
Okay?
Wow.
All right? That's it. So we need alternates. You know, we only had six people here tonight. I hate facing a forty B with just six people going into it. All right? Again, it only requires four people to vote to approve, not five. All right? So, anyways, just want, you know, and we'll, when we get it, I think, you may recall, Chris, you know, 'cause you, you were, you know, when, when I, at one point, thought we're gonna get, after the PLO, the, the project eligibility, uh, project eligibility letter came in, I was asking everybody, okay, what's happening with vacations? You know, what, what months are you, you know, when are you gonna be away? So I made sure I ca, I put that in a calendar, so if something came up, I could take a look at it and say, okay, let's, let's schedule this. Now, once the, once a comprehensive permit is filed, is at that point, the town, we can, of course, Amy Kessel will get involved, but we will be getting a budget from the Mass Housing Authority for a consultant, who will be working with us regarding the whole process. And he'll help determine, you know, with things like traffic studies, things like that, and a lot of these studies, you know, often are the responsibility of the applicant, but it's reasonable for us to request it. So we'll be looking at what we're gonna request all the time.
Brian, along the discussion of the meeting attendance, is there any way that we can get remote, in other words, call in, 'cause I know a lot of us are gonna be gone for some part of this winter, myself included, is there any way we can attend remotely?
I don't believe so. But, Rachel, let's find out.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not sure if you can attend remotely for forty B.
Well, that's, I think if that's an approved meeting, uh-
Well, you know what, we can ask that, and we have, we, okay, write that question down. When we have the training session, it's a good time to ask, not, ask Mass Housing, they're here giving us training, as to what our flexibility is on remote. I don't wanna bother the town attorney on that right now. Think about these questions ahead of time, and that's a good one. Write them down, in a little, some sort of note, put them on your, you know, write them all down, and when we have the training, be ready to ask these questions. That's why I wanted to bring this whole subject up, when we all start considering this, and, and read the background of it, so that you have your questions already ready to go, you know, when we're gonna jump in this thing. By the way, just out of, just so you know, and, uh, once, once a, uh, there is a PEO, and they're gonna go forward, uh, there is this, there will be a state agency that'll be, that'll be sponsoring and funding a program. And actually, the developer, and, and they do that for a lot of reasons, but the developer will be getting a loan on the project from a specified state agency. And they do that, even though it could be, the developer could be gold financially, you know, his funding for the project goes through, you know, one of these, you know, read about it in his handbook, a state agency, so that, they are, they are taking a look at, at that applicant's financial situation. They give him the funding for the project, whether it's two hundred thousand dollars or five million, and they, as far as may go, and sell that note someplace, but they're in control of how the financing is handled, and how they stipulate how the financing can be, can be done, it's controlled by a state agency, not from Bank of America. Okay? Just a, just a little, little side note. All the stuff you didn't really, didn't really need to hear, but there you go. All right? Okay, we're going to, um-
I know.
Huh?
Thirty minutes. We're over your twenty.
Oh, no, it was twenty for a forty B.
And you went thirty.
I have, you're out, you're out of line.
Rachel wants to go home.
Wait a minute, hold it. Part of this is, right now, we're on Rachel's territory at the moment. Okay? So she handled, she was, uh, we sat down today, and, uh, there is, uh, it was determined that we need to change our format a little bit. Okay? So, has anyone-
What matter of what?
The decisions.
Decisions. So, uh, why don't you hand out, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna show you a, a typical decision. Now, you know, we have the motions that you hear, that, that Al does, but there's a ton more involved on a written decision, and, uh, John knows that, 'cause he-
That's why I always tell him, when they say thirty days, it is not thirty days. And I think it creates a false expectation. It did in me. It's, it's thirty days that, from the time it's published, so you can come, get a copy of it, go to land court, file it yourself, bring it back, file it in the town, um, it could be a week or two.
It's two months, it's two months.
Yeah, it's two, it's-
Two months.
It's, it's thirty days, it's just from the time it's published to the time you become reported at land court, and, uh, I, I really wish we would stop saying thirty days, 'cause it's not thirty days.
Now, did you, did you hand out a copy of the decision?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so guys, um, the key thing here is that, this is, which one do they have? I have Atlantic Avenue, which one did you give everybody?
Ginger Palm Lane.
Oh, I, I gave you the, look under, look under this that I just gave you.
Oh, okay. Let's go to Ginger Palm Lane. And, uh, folks, if you're listening in from Ginger Palm Lane, we are not, we're not changing our decision, just want you to know that. All right, so, um, it just gets into the meeting situation, procedural history, and then facts and evidence presented. All right? And if you look on the second page, um, it's, it really is the finding of facts, if you review the application, associated documents, the board found that, and, and this is before the motion, the things that we found that were key to this, this application, this case. In this case, you know, verifying it's a single-family dwelling, uh, and will remain a single-family dwelling, no increased demand for town services, and both the bylaws. But there also could be other finding of facts, and we've had some decisions that've had, and I can tell you, like, the case there with the Wapenecket Crosset Golf Course, there were several findings of facts on that decision, that weren't really in the motion itself, necessarily, it might have been referred to. So, um, and then it gets into, you know, what documents were presented during the meeting. And then it gets into reviewing the property, that we have the authority to do this, and et cetera, et cetera. And then we finally, you know, gets into the actual motion that you've heard, you heard Al, you know, read out. Okay? So, it's been, and, and Rachel's been going to courses, and looking at meetings and so forth, and found the fact, and actually, uh, findings of facts, and that's something that the planning board does now. There may be a motion to approve a project, like we read out, but prior to that, everyone, and, and I'm sure that the attorneys can also jump in, get findings of facts in there, because, and sometimes, when we've been doing decisions, we have sent, we, you know, Rachel and I have sent out a copy of the decision to an attorney, particularly when it involved a difficult case, and there might have been, you know, people of buzz of interest, that you didn't know whether or not this might go further. We, we wanna make sure we write a good decision. So, more than once, you know, we put it out there, and verify we've included all the key facts, and whatever comes back from an attorney is additional findings that may have been discussed during the meeting, which we didn't put in the decision. Now, sometimes Rachel's found that standard findings of facts actually were never discussed during the meeting. Okay? You know, that, and so we, she's writing, we're writing a decision that I'm signing, we might have missed an occasional fact here and there, that really should be in there so that we, we have a good, solid decision. So going forward, we're actually gonna change things, where we, prior to the motion, we're first going to say, okay, what are the finding of facts in this case? And ahead of time, I'll prepare a list of finding of facts, and they'll have an opportunity to, as well as the attorney, whatever, to, to adjust it or add one in, here are the findings of facts regarding this case. And then we're actually gonna vote on the finding of facts. All right? And that could be the whole board, I think, I'll work, you know, we, we do that, okay?
Well, it'd be af, it would be after you assign the voting members.
All right, so we guess they have the, okay, so, well, no, a board member can bring it up, they just can't vote on it.
Yeah.
All right, so we're gonna get the whole board involved, what finding of facts need to be considered in this decision.
So we're gonna have to debate the, all these facts on every case?
Or lists. I don't think there needs to necessarily be a debate, I think there can be a standard template that you use.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's pretty much gonna be standard template. You know what you do now, you know, first thing is, June thirtieth's a lame day, no parking.
So this is gonna increase the meeting another-
Another ten minutes.
Ten minutes for a case.
Well, no, but I'm just, it could be five minutes.
I know, that's the point.
It could be five minutes, but we have to make sure that during the meeting, a discussion of these, of these findings of facts are brought up in the meeting, so we have a decision that isn't different on facts from what was discussed during the meeting. We don't wanna miss findings of facts. Now, right now, you know, we have a standard, you know, date range thing, we have a standard, whether you're gonna use a number two parking on the lot or not, and we either say yes or no, we, we cross them off, and we just go forward. Takes a moment. It's not gonna take much time, but they'll have to be ready, as far as to confirm what the finding of facts are. And if the attorney feels we've missed a finding of fact, that to strengthen his case, should there be an appeal, and it was discussed during the meeting, during his presentation, whatever, then we'll have it in, and we'll have a quick vote on the finding of facts.
So there've been things that have been left out here that's caused problems, huh?
Not problems, but, you know.
There hasn't been any, there hasn't, hasn't caused any problems since I've been here, I've just noticed that I'm putting the findings on the decisions, but the board isn't necessarily stating these things, and you're not voting on them.
Occasionally, we've, we've missed, missed something that wasn't in the motion, that needs to be a finding of fact, to have a proper decision that's gonna hold up on appeal. So that's what the, I just wanted to, so this is what a decision looks like, a full decision, and this is what Rachel and I go over, and she prepares, and I review it, and, you know, I find I'm making changes, but this is what we do, when the meeting's over, and then after it's done, I sign it. And speaking of signatures, um, I'm out of town as of Tuesday, noon time, this week, so, on the decisions to be signed, if I'm not gonna be there, Al, Rachel, give you a call to go in and sign the decisions.
Okay.
I might have a chance to see the drafts, but, you know, so, what's the decision?
That's why it's not thirty days.
No, but, let me just ask you one question, as I read this thing, there'll be no increased demand on town services. What in the name of good heaven does that mean?
Whatever structure or use they're proposing doesn't increase the need for maybe police or fire or rescue.
Yeah, well, all of a sudden, someone proven somebody to put up a, you know, a twenty-story building, or putting up a, okay, let's, let's face it, let's-
All right, I, I'm not, I just, just-
No, but it could be, like, when we get a decision on a, a larger project, could be, you know, does it, does a, whatever size house, or, you know, number of units, would that increase, you know, certain point, it, it might, you know?
It sounds like there's these three bullets, a definition of not more detrimental to the neighborhood, are they the same on all of these cases?
Well, that's because of the-
Yeah, it's been the same on every decision.
So, I mean, that's just, it looks like it defines what detrimental the neighborhood-
Right.
-because of the following reasons.
Yeah.
So it's defining what that term detrimental the neighborhood is.
Right. So defining of facts.
Right.
So we just need to- So we just need to make sure we bring these things up. It's gonna be, it's gonna be, it's gonna be boilerplate template stuff occasionally on...
I guess I, I'm not sure I understand why you have to read it out, because that's defining what detriment, you said detrimental the neighborhood, and that's what that means, right?
That's the court case that covers that.
We have to vote, we need to vote on finding of facts, make sure we have all the facts in the case before we do a motion. That's, that's basically how it's properly done, from what, you know, and that's how they actually, the planning board does it as well. What are the facts, we all agree on the facts of this case. And it's very simple, it's a single-family house, it's not gonna be any big demand for services, whatever it might be. Okay? You know, um, let's, if we're, at some point, we have a larger project, at some, at what, at some point, a, a major development might put, particularly from the planning board's point of view, might put a demand on additional town services.
I, I don't object to the process type of thing, I just, I get hung up a little on finding a fact, like, some of the stuff we've talked about, um, you know, I, to me, it's as presented, right? So...
Yes, correct.
You know, it's, I, I have not validated whether or not the building height is actually the building, you know, some of the things we've gotten into, you know, dimensional issues and stuff is, you know, I think what we're discussing factually is represented by the paperwork.
Correct.
But I would be hesitant to say that, you know...
Well, I don't think we're gonna get into, I, I don't think we're gonna, well, I don't believe we're gonna be using finding of facts in who you're building on.
Yeah.
That type of stuff, it's, it's pretty much, you know, again, what you're seeing here, and just wanna make sure that we cover all the bases, you know? If, um, if we were to pull out, and maybe the next meeting, you know, it was done a year or so ago, the, the, uh, Quocet, you know, um...
It could even be like a generic statement that says the proposed project meets the zoning requirement, it does.
I mean, yeah, that should be labor, keep everybody here, but I think, you know, even I look at something like that, you know, the, the dwelling room remained a single-family dwelling, and that's what they said. I don't know if they've got some family living in the basement, you know?
Right.
We're not attesting to that, so I think, to me, it's based upon, that's the way it was presented.
Right, and if they, and the decision, they violate those things.
Right.
Decision was based upon this.
Yeah, these were the facts as presented.
Right.
Right.
You know, not...
Not necessarily verified.
No, I'm testifying that I, you know, other than what it says here about myself, that I've reviewed the material, reviewed the property, that we can...
We can certainly say we're gonna vote on the findings of facts as presented.
As presented.
Mm-hmm.
That'd be fine, I think that's fine.
'Cause I think some, sometimes, reality may not match what we're presenting.
Absolutely.
Right, and, and that wouldn't be on the board if they approved a, a project, and then after the fact, the property owners would go in and do something that they didn't.
Right.
I mean, not that any builder would do something different than what they planned, I mean, of course, you know?
Of course not.
No. All right, we end up with twenty-nine percent.
Exactly, exactly.
Right.
All right?
Or even just, you know, I mean, all kidding aside, the one case we had tonight is, the quote, Ninth Street is in three different places, on three different drawings. I don't know, factually, where is Ninth Street? I don't know.
What do you mean, Seventh Ave and Ninth Street, Third Street?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's interesting, isn't it?
Yeah, one of it goes all the way to the lake, and then...
Yeah, One Dozen.
One Dozen. And then one's next to the lot, and one's abutting the lot.
I was out looking for the property, the neighbors, the abutters didn't know where it was. Seriously, do you know where the property is? I think it might be down there.
For me, it's the as presented, right? We're, we're taking what's presented.
We can certainly follow it that way, just to clarify, I think that's presented. That's unproblematic. All right? Well, guys, I'm done.
Excellent.
All right. I had two new business items, but...
Okay.
They're quick.
Go right ahead.
One, uh, which I know it's an upcoming case, not to discuss it in detail, but there was a lot of references to the Dover Amendment, on something we're gonna be discussing at a future meeting, and I'd certainly like an overview of the Dover Amendment versus just bits and pieces.
Did we get, did we, was there some mail, email?
I emailed you guys.
Was there some, or maybe I missed that email?
The very beginning, back in May or June.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I brought up tonight, I, I keep on going back over this case.
Right.
How many times have I gotta go back over this case, and then you continue it?
Yeah, well, that's why I think each time, there's like a new explanation of what, you know...
So, um...
The Dover Amendment is just section three of the zoning act, it's the same thing.
Okay.
Um...
It's forty-eight section.
To agricultural properties, right?
Agricultural and educational properties, churches...
Yeah, there's other uses that are protected under it, but...
Okay.
Yeah.
Before, before we actually discuss this thing, that I would like to review it more. But then the other thing I was actually gonna bring up last time is, I'm assuming that everyone got served, Buck, I got served.
I didn't get served.
For the, um...
That was about a month ago?
Yeah, for the, um...
I figured you guys would've talked about it at the last meeting, yeah?
No, we didn't, the Braddock, Thirty-four Braddock Street, I'm assuming the town attorney is on top of it, so...
Yeah.
No, I don't recall getting served on that.
I've been served on that twice, so, get in line.
Maybe you got his.
I didn't get one sent to me in the mail.
I don't know, the town got it, I received a copy, Amy Kessel got a copy, so I'm not, I mean, I can give you...
It was sent, it was sent to your house.
Yeah, certified mail.
I didn't get it.
Says you got one.
Maybe.
I mean, he said I got one, I did not get one.
Yeah, so that's why I wanted to...
You didn't get that?
Did you ever get a slip saying that you missed mail that you needed to sign for?
No.
It's only the one, five of us that voted.
No, I never got it.
Dave, you didn't get one either?
I didn't vote, though.
No. It's only the, they only served the five people that voted.
No, that's not true, I got served in Wapquett, and I didn't vote on it.
No, I mean, on this document here.
No, but I'm telling you on Wapquett.
Oh, yeah. Maybe they just liked you.
They just wanna shake you up.
Yeah, they got my attention.
So again, I just wanted to note whether or not...
Well, can you, can you get me a copy of that? Oh, you didn't, you're okay.
You can have my copy.
No, it's quite all right.
What is, what is the mon...
Uh, it's the Braddock Lane, the one with the parking, the objection over whether or not parking really existed.
I have heard through the grapevine that they're not going through with that project any longer. Um, the property owner applied for a building permit recently for other interior renovations that don't, it, it doesn't include anything that needs zoning relief. They're not doing any more additions or...
Well, actually, that puts an exclamation on my point of why I always make these decisions, so that, you know, they don't find fault with the technically, the technical aspects of the decision.
Yeah.
Okay? 'Cause it's in, and, uh, and then on, on decisions like that, when I, I'm sure, if it, I made sure that all, all, all members that were there that night got the vote. You know, it's a, just to tighten things up. Well, so you've heard the fact that it's, they may be pulling the project, not doing it?
That's what I heard.
Yeah.
What project is that?
Thirty-four Braddock Street, I don't think they're gonna go forward with that project.
Okay, um, is there any old business? Okay, and, uh...
Is that what this one is?
All right, no correspondence, any, right, so I, it's nine twenty-nine?
My point is, that's, that's Braddock.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
I'm making the motion.
Second.
All right, Al made a motion.
All in favor?
Yeah. All right.